Please stand. December 9, 2014, Gulf County Board of County Commissioners is in session.
Join me in prayer, please. Father, we thank you for all that you do for us. Father, we ask that you give us our many sins. Father, we ask that you look over us today as this board goes about conducting the business of the great people of county. Father, as always, we ask that you look over our military, the ones that are on active duty today that is putting lives on the line for our freedom, the ones that served in the past and the ones that saved the ultimate sacrifice. Father, we also ask that you look over our military, our law enforcement. It seems like it's not a day goes by that we don't have some type of conflict where they lose a good officer or officers are put in and laid in danger. Father, again, look over this and bless this community. Let's all come before this board. Let's all leave here as good friends and good neighbors. All in your precious name. Join me.
Good allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, every being and every creature.
Good morning to everyone. Thank you for coming out to the December 9 regular meeting of the Gulf County Board of County Commissioners. Before we get started, I want to let's all take a moment and thank fine Tiger Shark Football Team of Port St. Joe for bringing home a state championship. Not only the players, the speakers, always include the cheerleaders, they're part of it, and the staff members. Again, welcome each of you, taking time to come out this morning to our regular meeting. It's great, not only for the great community of Port St. Joe, but for Gulf County as a whole, and they ought to be highly commended. Anyone in the audience has any business before the board today, get time for public discussion. This time, we're going to take a brief recess. Our attorney, today, our attorney is in chambers. If you're not on the agenda and you've been given time. This time, we're going to address the consent agenda information packet. Judge Fischel, he should be here any moment because Judge Fischel has court starting at nine, so I ask that you be patient with us and just wait until our attorney gets here. So, to the audience, anyone in the audience have any questions concerning the consent agenda or the information packet? Mr. Butler, the county administrator, will not be here today, so bear with us, please. You do be recognized.
Yes.
Come up, sir.
Good morning. Patrick Floyd, and of Port St. Joe, and I'm here actually on behalf of Bo Williams and
They will be here very shortly.
probably every other person in the county who is interested in making sure that fairness is dealt with. There is, and I know you've been handed, but there's also previously been given objections to the consent, to the consent agenda, and in fact, that particular part that takes up, I think it's 105 through 108, but that particular part that deals with the... Let's go ahead and do it like that. Let's do it like that.
We can save you a little time on this. I represent Ellis Smith, whose variance request is before the board this morning. We're going to ask you to table that so that we can reset it at a future time. Maybe we'll save you a little time this morning.
In addition to that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to request that you pull pages 105...
All right, let's not get out of control over here. We're not in court of law here this morning. Let's recognize our county attorney here.
If I can, to Mr. Floyd's point, I'd like to pull pages 105 through 107 from the consent.
Just like pull pages 105 through 107. 105 through 107. Is that satisfactory to you, Mr. Floyd?
Well, there's no really reason, it isn't necessary to pull it from the consent order, but now that's set, the consent agenda, but now with the agreement, with the specification that is being withdrawn to be tabled by counsel for Mr. Smith, then there's no necessity, I presume, of going forward at all or presenting any of the material that we have. Is that correct?
My response to that, no, that's not correct, Mr. Chairman. I pulled pages, I've requested pulling pages 105 through 107 as I submitted them along with the planning department. With regards to the hearing schedule for this morning, I know Mr. Gibson, Mr. Floyd are there presenting that to you. I'm dealing specifically with the consent agenda, and I've asked to pull those pages, and then I'll address them after you get out of the consent agenda discussion.
Mr. Chairman, for the public...
Just a minute, just a minute, just a minute, just a minute.
Tell them what the pages are.
Just a minute, anything here. I'm coming.
Thank you.
All right, all right, Mr. Gibson?
I was going to say something there, but...
All right, then, go, we'll reach over here. Commissioner Bryan, just going to keep it in order.
I think for the public, we need to, we're talking about pages, but not everyone has the agenda, and I think we need to tell them what those pages are that we're discussing and that we're pulling instead of...
Commissioner, and for the public, pages 105, I'm sorry. Pages 105 through 107 is a memorandum consistent with your past policy recommendations from staff. It's titled Gulf County Variance Application Quasi Judicial Review Process and Hearing Procedures. It is a recital and summary on the first page in a memorandum form, and then a proposed policy for the county to move forward on variance applications on page 106 and page 107 in a quasi judicial setting.
And I guess, Chairman McDaniel, the point that we would make on that, we are tabling this and going to, staying it or tabling it until a subsequent time, we want to make sure that Mr. Bo Williams and I are notified the next time before the time that it's actually set for a hearing so that we can make sure and we can notify these other people. Number two, there is a procedure that has been, that has been talked about here that's going to be, that was in the consent agenda and then to be brought out, and that particular procedure itself is something that requires a great deal of inspection because I caution you, it not only is contrary to what the judge's order is because it doesn't give opportunity for cross-examination and such like that, but it also sets up a change in the LDRs, which obviously requires an ordinance, not the passing of a policy. So, these are all things, this was just published, this was just sent out. People need an opportunity to look at this and digest it. I know about it. I've been in this in the county government or government law for a long time. I know that Mr. Novak's only been there two or three years, but these are particular things that are really important as far as quasi judicial hearing. This law has been out there for about 10 or 20 years.
We've been in discussions, so...
Okay, so, so that's...
You want to extend his time here?
Motion to extend.
Second.
All right. Let's go ahead and get done now. Listen, I'm dealing with three attorneys here. We're not going to wind up in appellate court, I hope, from right here this morning, so let's get this thing very simple and common sense, and if we have to table it till April, we'll do it.
Well, I'm trying to do it all at once. We've already gotten the variance tabled, okay?
Okay, the variance is tabled.
So, why don't we just go ahead, instead of having all these people around to wait around with, to deal with this new procedure, why don't we, and we just got a chance to look at it this week, why don't we go ahead and it's been brought, a motion's brought out of the consent agenda, let's just go ahead and table it too. Do you have any objections to that, Tom?
I'm only here on the variance application, and we'd like you to table that at this point.
All right, Mr. Gibson would love to table the variance. Now, hold up, just a minute. Now, I need to go back over to the county attorney.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the matter has not been tabled. That's an action that you do. Mr. Floyd indicated it's tabled. You have a request from the applicant's attorney. You will all vote on tabling that.
Exactly.
The issue before you right now is the consent agenda in your protocol today. It is, I have requested you pull 105 through 107 from the consent. Consent is something that is not up for discussion or controversial amongst you Commissioners. It will be introduced for discussion, and at that time, after the consent, we can discuss the policy and procedures that have been recommended to you by the planning department and myself, and we can move forward and you can act accordingly as to see fit after public discussion.
With that being said by our attorney, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to pull those pages from the consent agenda and approve, has anybody got a problem with the rest of the consent, to approve the rest of consent but to pull 105 through 107?
I, we haven't gone to the, Mr. Chairman has not gone to the board yet with questions on the consent and information, so I will reserve that I do have questions on other matters in the consent and information packet, Mr. Chairman. But regarding these pages, I would like to clarify, I believe that Mr. Attorney has said that he wants to pull it from consent, but he does want to discuss it in today's meeting, so I want to clarify that.
That's correct.
That's the policy.
Let me change my motion, Mr. Chairman, to just pull 105 through 107. We'll deal with...
And I'll second that. All right, now, we have a motion, Commissioner Yeager, to pull pages 105 through 107 out of the consent agenda, seconded by Commissioner McElroy. Any further board discussion on these?
On just those pages being pulled?
Yes, yes. And you want the audience, is there any opposition to these pages being pulled? Not, not. Motion passes five and oh. All right, those are approved.
Nothing further?
So, you do understand the policy will be discussed today at this meeting?
Well, I understand, and this is what I want to readdress the chairman about because I know I'm supposed to address you.
Yeah.
It seems to be that we're, we're going to follow this procedure for purposes of this time, but that what we're asking for in here is to go ahead and skip forward for the benefit of the people so that they do not have to wait out here and discuss this at a time where we're not prepared for it, it's not really been analyzed by these people. So, instead of actually waiting and then discussing this today, why can't we go through, since procedure is a question, why can't a motion just be made right now to go ahead and postpone the determination or consideration of this procedure, this quasi judicial procedure, until the people have had the opportunity to look at it and come back before? The variance is going to be postponed, why can't we just come back later for, in the interest of fairness and the consideration of the people here, to do it later? So, I ask that.
Mr. Chairman, I will make the motion that we table the vote on the policy, that we allow discussion. I have some input that I would like to give on the policy, but I will make the motion that we table the final vote on the policy until the next meeting so that we allow time for additional input from public.
Thank you. I think that would be good for us, yeah.
All right, just a minute, let me get all this down, people. I have to...
Why are you shaking your head no?
Let's hold up, hold up. All right, now, Mr. Counselor.
Just as a general comment, Mr. Chairman, the policy that's been submitted is the same protocol that you have always received from the legal department and the planning department. It's submitted in your consent or your agenda. It's provided to the entire public, including Mr. Floyd and Mr. Gibson, all at the same time as the public receives it, as do you Commissioners. It's all put out at the same time, so the public has the same opportunity as everybody to review these issues. I pulled it from the consent or I've requested that you have, and which you've done so that we can discuss it today, and I'd like to offer comment once we move past the consent agenda. So, it's, there's nothing inconsistent with your past practices. We're going to pull it from the consent and we'll discuss the issue, and I just want to note for the commission, there's other variance hearings today as well, so it's not just simply this one today. There's other people per the judge's order that are impacted by the discussions we're going to have. So, following the agenda, the first item is the consent agenda, you're addressing that. We've pulled that. When we get back to it later, we can discuss it at that time. So, that would be my recommendation to have the ability to discuss the policy and the procedures that have been recommended by your planning and your legal department per the judge's order.
Mr.?
Sure, if you recognize...
I do understand that there's other variance applications to be heard today, and I guess the, a little bit of confusion to me would be that we have a new policy in our consent agenda, and if we do, you've removed it from the consent agenda, but apparently it is something that is going to be presented for a vote today, and if we do vote on this policy today and there are variance applications that are in process, are they subject to this new policy? My understanding from the last meeting is you said that the new policy would go into effect in January, and that may not be the case, but I believe that's what you said at the last meeting. So, then the variance applications today would not be subject to the new policy, so then the ones that we're looking at today, it doesn't matter if we pass this policy today or in January. If they are subject to this policy, that does not seem like a fair process that we pass a new policy today and the people who are here today have to adhere to it. What I would recommend, since we are under a judge's order, clearly the judge has stated that our, our procedure is incorrect, and we are looking at a new policy. It's an extremely important part of what this county does, the function of this county government, and it deserves more time than the week that, that this has been out in the public, that we should have at least two meetings for people to come and express their opinions on it, and I believe that any variance applications that are in process now should be tabled until our, our new policy is in place and is correct so that we are in compliance with the judge. Then, any variance that is being applied for should come forward under that new policy. So, it seems to me that it's, it's all backwards, where we're rushing everything through when the main point should be that we do things correctly, because all these decisions we make have long lasting consequences. So, my motion stands.
Mr. Chairman, I'd be happy to comment and respond to the commissioner. If you, are we past the agenda or are we going to continue to discuss the policy? Because I can address the state statute and the land development regulations.
Agenda passed with the pulling of that policy.
No, I clarified on that motion that we were, we were only voting on pulling those pages.
Oh, I'm sorry, I stand corrected.
I'm sorry, Ms. Becky, I just want to make sure.
That's okay. I had it wrong.
Okay, so, if there, I apologize. Just the clarification, there's a motion on the floor to, to table the policy. We've moved past the consent?
We have moved past the consent.
Okay, well, yes, sir. It's the chairman and the commission's discretion, however you wish to proceed. If you want to deal with the consent...
We're not implementing the policy to January, is that my correct?
No, sir, that is not my recommendation. It is, I would like to discuss, I pulled it from the consent, I've requested, and I'd like to discuss it with the commission and have the public input on the policy that's been recommended by the planning and the legal department. Yes, sir?
Thank you. All right. You have a motion on the floor?
Clarify your motion, because I want to hear the discussion on the, on the policy. I don't know at the end of the day we'll vote on it.
I will restate my motion. My motion is that we have discussion on the policy today, but we delay approving the policy until the next meeting so that we allow for any additional comments. It is a quick turnaround time when the agenda comes out on Thursday. We are in the holiday season, a lot of people are traveling. This is a very important issue, and I believe that we can discuss it today because I think we should work on it and, and have discussion, but that we should delay approving the new policy until the next meeting. That is my motion.
Let me second for discussion and discuss with the attorney. Is there, is it my understanding that you not only do want to discuss this policy, but you want to get a vote of the board on this policy to move forward?
Following discussion of the board and the public per your ordinance, I'm assuming there's going to be a motion to some effect to take an action, either to deny, to approve, to table, to continue for further information, whatever it may be, it's the commission's discretion. I just also want to include, and I don't want to get ahead of the discussion, the planning board had, per the planning board's LDRs 2.0504 yesterday morning at 8:45, the planning board shall adopt rules necessary to conduct its affairs in keeping with the provisions of these regulations. Yesterday morning, your planning board adopted these policies and procedures, which they have the authority on the LDRs to do, so it is ripe for discussion. It has been put in your consent, it has been pulled out, and the staff would like to discuss it with the commission and entertain public comment, and at that time, take action, but I'm just dealing with...
I think I'll pull my second for, for that particular motion with the understanding that we can, we can, after the discussion, we can still table it, or we can move forward by, so I'll pull my second.
I have an additional comment before you move on.
Okay.
Obviously, the gentleman at the podium represents a considerable amount of people in the, in the audience, and I, my understanding is the folks from the audience are asking for additional time. But my, my other point is, I, I'm wondering why in recent times we've had the PDRB meeting scheduled the day before our county commission meeting, because they're here, they had like a three hour meeting yesterday morning, but now we're having our planning, development, and review board meetings the day before our county commission meetings. There is no time really in between for any kind of discussion or further review of what the PDRB has considered, what their recommendations are before it comes to this board, and for the public to hear what their decisions are. The public may only be interested in something that they are considering based on what they're recommending to the board, but there, those PDRB meetings should be held before our agenda goes to print, so their recommendations can be in the agenda so that the public knows what they recommend to this board and what we're considering. So, because they approved this policy apparently yesterday morning, it really is compressed, and I don't understand the rush. I don't understand why Mr. Attorney feels it's so important for us to vote on this today. It seems to me that the goal of this board should be to get things right and to take the time that the public can have input, we represent the public, as we are voting, they vote for us to make decisions, but it's based on their input.
Chairman McDaniel, I have, I'd like, just one second, please.
All right, just a moment. You have a motion on the floor, you withdrew your second, so your motion dies. Now, Mr. Floyd, we'll recognize you.
Thank you, sir. The very reference to the PDRB board having a meeting yesterday at which the policies, some policies were adopted, is, brings into complete focus the fairness that we're talking about, fairness that each of you have probably been on the opposite end of, the unfairness part of it, one time in your life or another, and the point that nobody wants to be on the other end of that. There's no necessity for moving forward with this when it's obviously has an appearance and a stench of unfairness, and I say it again, because there's no reason, nobody knew about this. I've been in this case as long as anybody, and we have not had any notice that there was going to be any PDRB taking up of this yesterday, or that they were going to deal with this particular policy. The first we knew about it was about a week, and I don't, I don't come here to blood anybody's noses, but I'm going to tell you, the people deserve to have unfairness because you're the people, and you're going to end up on one side of that or another yourself one day, and this is something that we all guard, and it's what the people, like the veterans that we're talking about here, fought for. So, I think they ought to be taken into consideration whenever you do any action like this.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Can I have 10 seconds?
Yes, sir, and Mr.?
Commissioner Bryan, I don't believe I actually represent anybody in this room.
I met Mr. Floyd.
You have, you have the floor. Thank you, Mr. Floyd.
We have, we made this...
Come on, Mr. Gibson.
... variance application in accordance with all of the rules and regulations that have been in effect in the county for years and years. We have not asked anybody for anything...
Please, go ahead, sir.
... that is not provided for by the regulations. We don't have a dog in the fight about what your regulations ought to be, but whenever you get to that point, we'll come back and see if we can comply with them.
Thank you, Mr. Gibson.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Mr. Chairman, just a few comments. Commissioners, I don't encourage or recommend any action. It's to the discretion and pleasure of the board, so to encourage a discussion, we pulled it from the consent for that purpose, so that the planning department and legal department. And then with regards to the stench or the request for fairness, the, the very essence of the policy and procedure that's been put into your pages 105 through 107 is an effort by the county staff to provide the transparency and fairness to the public so that everyone understands the rules and regulations going forward for the county. The planning department, I've met with them, we've discussed the future amendments to the LDR, but the county still has business at hand. Florida statute 286 specifically states of how to conduct a quasi judicial hearing. The rules that you have in your policy, it's not an effort to provide anything other than fairness to the public, so your LDRs and the Florida statute already speak to what's in that policy, which we'll discuss ideally today, but there's no unfairness. It's the effort of the staff to provide everyone in the public with a set rules set by statute and your LDRs. So, that, that's the purpose of why it was put in, and we pulled it from the consent so we can discuss it today and move forward.
All right, I think I have one more. We feel that the public...
I would just like to clarify, and my comment is from the public. I am the public. I'm not an attorney representing anybody, and don't have a dog in this fight other than a citizen who wants to figure out what's going on with its government. This issue with the variance has caused chaos. Now, where we are right now is under a court order to fix the process, your process, my government's process, which you and I share the development of, is broke. That's what the judge just said, fix it. On the 28th of this, on the 25th of this month, I heard the county attorney give a very clear rendition of what the judge's verdict was. I also heard the county attorney say it's going to take me some time, but I will gather up the information, I'll clarify it, I'll do the research, and I'll bring you a proposal for fixing the process, and doing, and this quasi, this quasi I just hearing is one part of fixing the process, and I'll bring you a proposal. I might be able to get it to you by mid-January, he said, followed by then some discussion with you, discussion with the public, maybe some training, because you're going to take a bunch of average citizens who do the PDRB, and they're going to be executing your rules so that the PDRB can go forward. And obviously, you don't want the PDRB involved in any variance or, or issues while you're developing a new policy because then everybody's, the process all stops. So, I heard the attorney, he's exactly right, I heard you say, I don't care if you don't get to April. I don't either, as long as it's done right. This is costing money, time, and a great deal of angst on the part of the community, me being one of them. When this is done, if you come under the Florida, the normal Florida procedure, which your attorney can check and advise you on, this goes from the PDRB to the federal, to the PDRB to the courts. You're not in it. You are the, you're like the superior judge who sets up a lower court judge. You set up a PDRB to do these things within, and you have the comp plans, and you have the LDRs which you establish, and you have a process which your lower court, the PDRB, is doing. Then, if there's a discrepancy at the PDRB, it doesn't come to you routinely in the state of Florida. It goes to the court. He's taking the county to... up the information. I'll clarify it. I'll do the research, and I'll bring you a proposal for fixing the process. And doing, and this, this quasi, this quasi I just hearing is one part of fixing the process, and I'll bring you a proposal. I might be able to get it to you by mid-January, he said, followed by then some discussion with you, discussion with the public, maybe some training, because you're going to take a bunch of average citizens who do the PDRB, and they're going to be executing your rules so that the PDRB can go forward. And obviously, you don't want the PDRB involved in any variance or, or issues while you're developing a new policy, because then, then everybody's, the process all stops. So I heard the attorney, he's exactly right. I heard you say, I don't care if you don't get till April. I don't either, as long as it's done right. This is costing money, time, and a great deal of angst on the part of the community, me being one of them. When this is done, if you come under the Florida, the normal Florida procedure, which your attorney can check and advise you on, this goes from the PDRB to the federal, to the PDRB to the courts. You're not in it. You are the, you're like the superior judge who sets up a lower court judge. You set up a PDRB to do these things within, and you have the comp plans, and you have the LDRs which you establish, and you have a process which your lower court, the PDRB, is doing. Then if there's a discrepancy at the PDRB, it doesn't come to you routinely in the state of Florida. It goes to the court. He's taking the county to court, not the PDRB, not you. He's taking the county to court. And, and he has standing against him when he goes to that court, the comp plan, the LDRs, the history of the PRD, PDRB, and the record from the PDRB following a quasi judicial hearing. That's how it happens in the majority of counties in Gulf County and, or in the state of Florida, just like that. It didn't happen here because we didn't have the procedure. We didn't have the procedure because we are Gulf County, and we kind of do things our own way until somebody gets mad. Somebody's mad, now we've got to fix it right from top to bottom. And if it takes you till April, I'm happy. I don't, what's got everybody up in arms is we don't trust the process. Major changes appear in the consent agenda, and they're approved five minutes later. I'm sure.
Thank you, Tom.
That's my concern as a citizen.
Thank you, Tom.
I'm tired of the seat of the pants running of my government.
Thank you.
And this is our duty to fix it. Thank you very much. The attorney was correct, by the way.
Anyone else from the public on the consent of the agenda? Young lady? Come forward, please.
My name is Sharon Winchester. I'm a resident of the Beacon Hill area, Veterans Park particularly. We've been waiting, you know, to see about the hearing information, and, Mr. Chairman, this variance that we're discussing mainly is a local issue. Would you agree?
Go ahead, you have 30 minutes. We'll respond at the end. Go ahead, you, take your time.
Okay. If this is a local issue, could you please explain to me and the great people of Gulf County why there was no advertisement in the Star newspaper that most of the people get here in St. Joe, but the advertisement was in the Panama City paper twice that we saw? We just happened to get the paper, otherwise, we wouldn't have known it, and I don't know how many other people would not have known. And that's, that's what my comment. If you want to do fairness and, you know, transparency, then why don't you advertise something so important in a local paper?
I can ask, ma'am?
No, sir.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I can respond to that, Ms. Chairman. Just to, I wanted to provide an explanation and answer the question for the advertisement. 2.0506 of your land development regulation states, as far as notice shall be given at least 15 days in advance of a public hearing. You all heard me say it on the 25th, citing the judge's order stating that the county didn't comply with that. It also says that the, the notice shall be posted at the Gulf County courthouse and one other public place at least 15 days prior to the public hearing. That is the notice requirements for those variances. The county did that. The county has, the county planner's not here today, but he submitted an affidavit indicating he had met and complied with those notice requirements. The county's practice of putting the notice in the local papers is not required by your land use regulations, as I stated before. It's an additional effort by this commission and the county board for transparency to notify the public. So that additional couple hundred dollars every time the county does that is to take it beyond what the land use regulations require by law in Gulf County and put it in the paper. The, there is a weekly paper and there's a daily paper. The county planning department also stated in their affidavit, as does HR, as does the administration, as does the legal department, if the time is of the essence and there's not enough time in the publication dates on a weekly paper, the county, Gulf County, commonly uses the News Herald, which is permitted by statute, to run public advertisements and notices. And the planning department, as they've done as a past practice, did that again this time. It's not required by law. The county courthouse, the administration buildings, where they publicly notice these meetings and hearings, but they took it an additional step again and put it in the paper. That's something for the planning department, I'm discussing with them. Going forward, as we consider amendments to your LDRs, if that's something the commission wants to include as a requirement by law, you can do that. As it currently stands, it's not. It's just something extra that Mr. Richardson has a practice of doing in the past.
Okay. Anyone else from the audience on this consent or information packet? Anyone? I think no one will turn to the staff. Any staff members have any questions concerning the consent agenda or the information packet? The one from staff who will turn to the board. Does any board member have any questions concerning the consent agenda or the information Recognize, Chairman, Commissioner Bryan.
I have, first of all, I have a question on the information packet.
Information packet, okay, let's go to you.
Page one.
Two, okay.
And this is regarding a notice to receive sealed bids for consultant services for design on David B. Langston Drive sidewalk project. And I just have a question about it regarding how we are interfacing with the city, and my, my recollection in attending some of the city meetings is that the city had been approved for a grant with the Safe Route to Schools, and I'm just wondering if that information is incorrect, and if it is correct, how, what, what we are doing regarding this project that I believe is in the city, how, how those two things work together.
Let me, Ms. Kapinski, could you address that, please?
I can. This is actually a LAP project. It's through LAP funding. It's federal funding. In order for this funding to be granted, you have to be LAP certified, and the city is not LAP certified. I have received the certification for LAP on behalf of the county, and so the city had asked the county to implement the grant on their behalf, and that was something that DOT approved for us to implement the grant project for them, since they're not LAP certified.
So we're working together with the city on this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
And then I have a question on the agenda.
All right. To wrap up the information, anybody else on the information?
Mr. Chairman, if I would just, to the commissioner on page one of the information at the very bottom, you'll notice, yes, sir, while you're discussing, I just wanted to note for the commission again, the grant department, I didn't include them before, but the grant department also utilizes the News Herald as permitted by statute, and you'll see that at the bottom there.
That really wasn't my issue. I just wondered how they worked together with you, if these were separate grants, or if these were working.
I know you have another issue. Is that correct? All right.
Okay, page 104. And this is an invoice from our county attorney's office, and I had sent an inquiry to our county attorney regarding these litigation matters that comprise this bill. I've had several calls from the community regarding the bill and had requested the clarification ahead of time, but I know Mr. Attorney's quite busy. We had a hearing this morning that he had to attend, and would just like some clarification for the public on the litigation matters that, that this bill for $3,703 comprises.
Sure. Ms. Commissioner, I did receive your email on Sunday evening about 9 o'clock. I did have a four-hour planning board meeting yesterday, and I'm prepared for the hearing and this commission meeting, so I have not had an opportunity to do that. I would encourage the commission and the public to go through the clerk's office if they have a request for public records such as bills. I submit all my bills to both the clerk's office and the administrator's office. With regards to specifics on the bill, what, what specifically is your question with regards to litigation?
Well, well, this bill is in the consent agenda. So as a county commissioner, I am approving this bill. I believe that is the function of this board when we approve the items in the consent agenda. So I have an invoice from the attorney that I have to approve, and it says Gulf County litigation slash pending litigation matters, 26.45 hours billed at 140 an hour for $3,703. And it's very difficult for me to approve that when I really have no idea what it means, and that's why I asked you directly, as I didn't know I had to make a public information request in order for this to be approved. In addition, I've had people from the community asking me, because it is actually their money that we're approving, it's not my money, if, if I was the paying client, I would look at the detailed bill. I am representing the folks who are the paying client, and I would like to see the detailed bill, and that's why I asked you directly prior to the meeting.
Sure. As I indicated, I'd be happy to get you whatever you need from my office. I know I've provided to Ms. Lanier. Mr. Butler's not here this week. Ms. Lanier's not here. She's receiving treatment today. So I can leave here after the meeting. We walk over to Ms. Lanier's office, and I can get a copy of what I submitted to them and provide that to you.
So is this, this is not part of your normal base payment? This is not part of the base payment that you receive? This is over and above, under your contract, but in the portion of your contract that is not the base payment?
Correct.
So you want us to go ahead and approve this today, and I, I know if I pull it, that this board will approve it.
No, actually, Commissioner, let me pull it. Let me request that you pull pages 103, 104.
I don't have an issue with 103 because it states what it's for.
Standing practice.
Deepwater Horizon matters.
For the past four years, it's been the same practice under the contract to submit it to the county administrator. The county administrator, by the bottom right corner, indicates that they're submitting it for your consent approval. If there's a question, I would certainly be happy, I always discuss it with the commission or the administrator. The administrator's not here, but let me pull page 104, commissioners, and I will obviously provide that to the commissioner. The transparency's always been there.
Okay. We don't need to pull this. Our county administrator has signed off on this bill. We have him hired to do work for us. We need no pull with this.
But 103 is in conjunction, if you read 103.
103 states what it's for, Deepwater Horizon.
Deepwater Horizon, that's correct.
I have an issue with 103.
All right, we recognize with Deepwater Horizon, is that something reimbursable through what we, what we're going to receive from BP that you know of? We're certainly going to submit that, I'm sure.
We're certainly submitting, and we have the expert here today who can hopefully comment on that later on.
And again, I have no issue with that invoice.
Hey.
I have no issue. It states Deepwater Horizon. We know what that is. You know, the, the public wants to know where their dollars are going, and as a member of this board, if the, if the county administrator has the authority to approve everything, I don't know why we have to vote on, on it. Either he has the authority to approve without our knowledge, or we have to vote on it. But if, if it's his authority, then it shouldn't come before us for our vote.
I, I kind of agree with you. I don't know why it comes before us when it's part of the contract in the first place, but in the history, we've, it's always come before us. But I just assume that as long as it's go, we've approved the contract, as long as it's going by the contract, county administrator signs off on it, there's no reason for it to come back to us. And so if you want to put that in form of motion, I'll, I'll support that, because I, I don't want to, I don't want to deal with, if, if, if I know you're going by your contract and the county administrator signs off you're going by your contract, I don't have any issue with that, so.
I'm not going to put that in the form of a motion, because the, the bottom line is, we are supposed to be providing information. The public should know what we are doing. If the public wants to know how their dollars are being spent, they should have that opportunity. And me, as a county commissioner, I, I, I feel that this board regularly approves things that we either don't have the information on, or the information was received in some other way, other than through this packet or through the public process. I, I asked for this information ahead of time so that we could avoid this issue.
Again, Commissioner, I have no issue with your request, and just so we can get back to the bigger picture, this has never been requested in four years as your attorney. It was requested on Sunday evening. I've had a very full 24 hours since then. I've not had an opportunity to go back and pull them. They are in the clerk's office, I'm sorry, in Ms. Lanier's office presumably, as they provided to Mr. Butler, who signed off on it last week. Again, it's never been requested before. I have no problem, Commissioner, with your request. It's never been a request or an issue, and I'll be happy to provide that to you. But like I said, to even continue the discussion, Commissioner, respectfully, I'll provide it to you. And again, all the county's invoices are public record and kept with the clerk, so I don't know.
And Mr. Attorney, you, you could have asked the clerk to email it to me, if, if it's that simple. And, you know, I was trying to do, give you the respect of asking you directly for the information.
I think we have it right here, the detail.
All right, let's recognize the.
I.
Madam Court.
You know, I, I am not, I did not pull this page. I asked the question, and I'm not looking to prevent our attorney from getting paid, but it, sometimes it feels that it's, it's difficult for me to get responses on information, and I don't want to have to take this position, but I do want the information that I have requested, and I, I don't believe that I should have to go through the public information process to get information on something that I am voting on.
Can, can Mr. Chairman, if you want to take a brief recess for the issue review?
It is not necessary. I, I would like to have a, a copy of this.
I'll add that to you.
And I'll wait and go with you after the meeting and get a copy, if that's all right?
That'll be.
Okay.
Okay. We got both pages 105 and 107 of the consent agenda are correct there. We've been here an hour here on this consent agenda. All right, is anyone else, Commissioner Quinn, you have any questions on any of the consent? I need a, a motion to pass the consent agenda.
So moved, Mr.?
Got a motion by Commissioner Yeager?
One second.
Thinking by, any further discussion?
Is that with page 104 or without?
We're pulling 105, no, 104 stage.
That's correct.
104 stage. We're pulling 105, 107. All right, any opposition? Motion passes. 5-0. Thank you. All right, at this time, we're gonna, gonna change just a little bit here. We have with us Diesel Allen Farm, Ron Jones, who has been representing this county for, yes, come on up, Ron, please. Give us a brief report, report to the board and to the people. Ron, it's good to see you. Glad you were able to come down.
Glad to be here. Ron Jones, attorney representing Gulf County in the BP matter. Two significant things to report. Number one, just yesterday, the Supreme Court of the United States threw out BP's appeal of essentially their own settlement, the settlement they agreed to that has compensated and will compensate numerous businesses and individuals in Gulf County and all over the Panhandle. So that is very good news. As everyone probably knows, Gulf County, like other counties, local governments are not a part of that settlement. They have their own claim. But we do think that the resolution of this issue on the appeal will, will provide BP some momentum to move forward, and it will provide the court, more importantly, some momentum to move forward with Gulf County and many other local government claims. So it's a very positive development. While we don't know on what date the court will release Gulf County's claim to be litigated locally, it is a very positive step in the right direction, and that's my report. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to.
Thank you, Ron.
Thank you.
Ron, the only question I'd ask is when we're gonna get a motion? I know you've.
As soon as we can.
There you go. That's a good answer. At this time, we'll have our public hearing on the PDRB recommended.
Sir.
Over to our attorney.
Mr. Chairman, as I indicated before, you pulled 104 through 107. We're now going into the public hearing phase for a quasi judicial hearing on your variance applications. Leave, if I recall, and Leanna, Becky, you can tell me, but there was a motion earlier to table the one public hearing today? Is that, am I correct? That's on the record?
It follows.
Mr. Gibson, Mr. Floyd.
It's after the PDRB recommendations public here. Separate item on the agenda. It was requested, but not voted on.
Okay. If, if I. If I can request of the chairman, if we can entertain, if we can switch the order, if there's a request from Mr. Gibson and Mr. Floyd, so we can dismiss with that, if that's the intent of the commission to table that, and then we can move on to the other matters.
I should wonder, that's that issue first, then.
If there's a request of the attorney.
Want a motion to table first, or?
Well, I believe that was a request of Mr. Gibson, and you all need to take action on that.
So move, so move to table.
Okay. Second. I have a second by Commissioner Quinn. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone from the public?
I just want to add to that, we had a hearing this morning on a motion to stay before Judge Fischel. The judge denied the motion to stay.
So that would be.
In discussing with the attorney.
Any further discussion on this, on this table? Anyone from the audience? Any opposition to this? Opposition, motion passes five and O.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
I appreciate you going in that order. As I indicated, you pulled pages 104 through 107, and as it's not part of the consent, now appropriate for discussion. In your agenda, you have a PDRB recommendations. As I indicated to you earlier, the PDRB took actions to adopt a policy and procedure before they had their hearings in a quasi judicial format yesterday. Now, in regards to the public comments you've already heard, I certainly would never discourage any of the commission or the public to not embrace the discussion, to take public comment. And now that it's been pulled, it'd be appropriate to discuss. As your county attorney, regardless of the board's actions today, adopting the policy or denying it or tabling it, regardless, it'll still be conducted in pursuance of statute 286. So the judge's order is very explicit. It gives the county instructions on how to proceed. Yesterday's planning board meeting was conducted in that format, and today's PDRB meeting will also be conducted in that format. The comments from the public that they would want to have additional input on this policy and procedure, I think you obviously should welcome that. I'm working with the planning department for amendments to your LDR. By law, that must be done through ordinance. To adopt an ordinance on land use, you must have sufficient notice and legal advertisement. That will push us into January. So I want to put those on the record for you all, so you understand the timeline. The very earliest that you can consider actual amendments to your LDR through ordinance would be in January or possibly early February. Going back to the PDRB hearings yesterday, they were conducted in a quasi judicial format. They adopted the rules and procedures. They also adopted a template form stating the grounds on which they make their recommendations to you. Today, you actually have a variance application and a nonresidential development order request. So pulling pages 104, 107. As the county attorney and the planning department's not here, I'll take any comment, recommendations from the commission with regards to that policy recommendation. I'm going to certainly take that policy and work with the planning department to incorporate it into your LDRs. So it's stated, just as there's a permanent notice affixed to your courthouse and your county admin building. So before we go into the PDRB, if there's any additional comment on that policy and procedure, I'd be happy to hear it and take those recommendations. The rest of the staff, Mr. Richardson's not here. But before we proceed with the PDRB recommendations and public hearing in quasi judicial format, I'd be happy to discuss the 104 through 107. I'm sorry, thank you, 105 through 107. And I said, I know Mr. Floyd has comments.
Chairman, when you're ready, I will have.
I await your procedure call, Chairman. Do you want me to go forward here?
Please.
Thank you. Patrick Floyd, Port St. Joe, thank you again. This is not necessary now to repeat some of those same statements that we did before regarding the procedure. But I do want you to know that there are still a number of deficiencies in this, as it compares with not only what the judge's order is, but what the law is, that's been in standing, been in existence for 10 or 15 years regarding quasi judicial hearings. One is, in particular, that there's no opportunity by this particular policy for the cross examination by the applicant, by the adversely protected party, by adversely interested parties. There's no reference in there for that. Another one that I note is that in the, in 2C, "The PDRB and the B OCC shall not be bound by the strict rules of evidence, nor limited to consideration of evidences would be admissible in a court of law. However, the PDRB and the B OCC, the same ones, and D, are given the opportunity to exclude irrelevant, immaterial, incompetent, unduly repetitious testimony evidence." So you don't have to follow the particular rules of evidence, but you can rule on anybody else that may come forward and tell whether or not that they are complying with the rules of evidence. So you can use a different standard with respect to other people, but you have a standard yourself that's more lax than other people. I think you should read this, as you should say, that we're not going to utilize the rules of evidence with respect, not just to the B OCC or the PDRB, but anybody else who comes before you. The other matter that I bring to attention, and it's not just me, I know that you've received a letter from different citizens, and I quote from one of those, that the cross examination opportunities in a quasi judicial hearing are the ones that are fundamental cornerstone to this process. That just like the Jennings inquiries of the county commissioners, the actual cross examination of a witness that's sworn in is a fundamental right that's recognized, and is not in this particular document. The other one that occurs to me, and just looking at it, just the brush of it, and I'm not giving you everything, I just happened to be able to get this, I got it last night. But I've read this, and one of the points at the end is, you're changing the procedure from what you have, and I don't know how they could adopt it as a PDRB with this in place, because it changes the procedure where the PDRB does not make a decision, right now your LDR has that it is. I know that means stop from previous experience.
Motion takes ten.
Let's go ahead and hear all he's got to say on this. I'll say.
Okay. So that particular, that procedure that we have, it actually changes the steps from the PDRB having it, and once the PDR determines it, it goes to the circuit court. This particular procedure changes it for the PDRB to make a recommendation, and then it goes to the Board of County Commissioners. I don't know if you want that, given your recent history with variances. That's the reason you usually put it down with the PDRB, for them to handle those type of things where it goes straight from them to the circuit court if somebody has a problem. But this particular procedure changes that and gives it as a recommendation to the Board of County Commissioners, which if I was a county commissioner, I may not want to have that, as evidenced here, what's happening here today. This puts in a place where you guys get it as a recommendation every particular time, every time. And that's a change in the LDRs, which cannot be made by procedure. It has to be made, I think, as Jeremy's already referenced, that he's going to change that as a part of an LDR coming up in the future, so that is a good thing. But there are some good parts in this that certainly need to be done. I would point out one other matter, since I've been given the time here, and I want to use it, I understand, is that the, there's some requirements that you have that are requirements, but yet they don't provide what really is fairness, like this publication in the new Panama City News Herald. That was published over there in order to try to meet a deadline, but never, to my knowledge, in the history of Gulf County has there been a variance, a variance on a sideline advertised in the Panama City Herald. Never. That's the first time. So it may be legally authorized to do it, but it's not something that generates a great deal of confidence in fairness. And that's what we want to agenda here. We want to have it so that everybody knows, you guys, when you get out of office, or you guys are going to another place, that you have that, so.
I respond to that real quick with that, and I know someone else mentioned this, and I don't want to get into debate of everything, but the News Herald runs daily, and the readership is much higher of the News Herald than it is of the Star anyway. Already run into issues with the planning board and all about timing. So I think going forward, you'll probably see more of that advertisement going to the News Herald, in fairness to the public, because many more people get the News Herald in Gulf County, and many more people read that News Herald than in Gulf, and it runs daily.
Well, that's true, but when you put it in there, you need to put that it's Gulf County. This one didn't even have, it's Gulf County. It just says the Board of County Commissioners will hold a public hearing. It doesn't even reference quasi judicial. So let's get it right if we're going to do it.
And I think we will, but going forward, I think you'll see more of that, because it's in fairness to the public, more people read the News Herald.
Yes, sir.
If I could.
Yes, sir.
I respect you highly, and I want you to understand that here. But this case right here has been, we've passed variance after variance. I've been on four years, just starting into my second term here. Commissioner Ryan's been here two years, starting into her third, and we have some of your senior members here. We have a new commissioner, Commissioner Quinn here, who is, it's going to take him. This particular variance, as I state again, we've passed variance after variance. We've had no problems, no problems. Problem here, and you know this, you know it, the PDR board is a liaison, they'll work hard for us. We can abolish them right here today, and abolish the PDR, and then it falls back on the board, which means we'll be meeting, instead of meeting ever, too, we'd be meeting every, every week. But they come in, they make the recommendation, and in their decision on this one, they had conflicts. They asked the board, take it, you know that. That's how it got in the hands of the board. PDR did not have the people, they had conflicts, they couldn't, you know, vote. Normally, if they come before us and whether someone needs a little handicap ramp, I don't see why it should take six months to approve a simple little handicap ramp to help someone get a wheelchair up, and they say, we approve it, 5040, millimeter, 300, we usually brush it right on through. That's the thing to do, and you know that.
Well, here's the thing, though. That particular thing was referenced to go back, and those processes that you do, the fact that you have done it before, I've run through a stoplight many times.
Yep.
And I'm not going to tell where it is or where it was, because I might be subject to something here, but that doesn't make it right. And that's what has been reviewed here, that it's not right to do those particular things. And what I'm saying, too, is, the PDRB board, and that's why you have them down there, and that's, I suggest that you empower them, and that's why I think it was in the first place, that they did not want to have this go before the county commission. And I suggest to you, I wouldn't do it. I would suggest that you do the PDRB, and then it go on appeal, straight to the circuit court, if somebody has a problem.
What you're saying.
Well, I would do that. That's the way, and that's why I say, in your particular, and you say that the Board of County Commission has handled it, but I tell you, as the judge noted, never is it stated in your LDRs or anywhere in your law that the Board of County Commissioners can handle a variance, period. And that's exactly what the truth is, and in fact, the judge's order said that it would not be, it would go to the PDRB, not before the Board of County Commissioners, as it had been scheduled on the agenda today. Thank you.
Thank you, Pat. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
With regards to the comments from Mr. Floyd for the benefit of the commission, first and foremost, Mr. Floyd indicated earlier in his many years of land use experience as an attorney, and I know he has a long career, not three years of land use practice for myself, but 13 is actually not as long as the 18-year standing practice in this county for the precedent that you followed. Mr. Floyd knows that because he's gone through that process where it goes to the PDRB, and then it comes to the county commission. You guys have followed that practice for 18 years as it was provided at your November 25th meeting. The word fairness and sench were mentioned earlier, and I keep going back to fairness. The very essence, as I mentioned before, of this policy is for fairness. It was commented that the, as long as he could recall, it's never been advertised in the News Herald. The affidavit from the county planner says, following a review of the local newspaper advertising schedules, as well as a staff calendar and board commissioners' meeting schedule, determined to reschedule notice and advertise the PDRB meeting and quasi judicial hearings for December 8th, and the commission hearings for December 9th, consistent with past county practice, when time is of the essence, I place the advertisement in the News Herald as the only daily circulated paper in Gulf County that would satisfy the LDR's 15-day notice requirement. The county planner, who's served in your planning department since 1999, has sworn to the court that that is a past county practice when time is of the essence. So I understand the comments being made to you today, but your county planner for the last 15 years has indicated otherwise. Again, the word fairness, you had a question as to the policy that's provided to you, saying that there's not an opportunity to cross examine. On the front of the courthouse in the county administration building, there's a permanent notice affixed that was put out there more than 15 days ago that states the following: "The proceeding shall provide the parties are able to present evidence, opportunity for all parties to be heard on the matter, cross examine witnesses, test and question evidence submitted to the record, and be informed of all facts upon the commission acts." Again, there's statements being made, but this is public notice on the courthouse. This has been placed there by the planning department. This is permanently affixed. So we keep speaking about fairness, but there, this, all the efforts by the planning department are to provide the transparency and fairness that is being spoken of today. The cross examinations, the quasi judicial setting was conducted yesterday, and as I indicated before, we can have a long discussion with the policy. I can certainly take your recommendations. Regardless of your outcome today on this policy, we will conduct the PDRB hearings today with past precedent, but we will apply that quasi judicial setting. And I'm going to work with the chairman and the clerk's office. We're going to swear folks in. We're going to provide that. I'm going to ask you certain questions. So regardless of your outcome today on that, I will recommend and encourage you to follow a certain format moving forward, regardless of the policy adoption or tabling today. So I offer that to you because we'll take that public comment, we'll take the consideration, and we'll incorporate it in your, hopefully, LDR amendments in January, February.
I would just like to give my comments to the document for the board's consideration and the, on page 106, item 1G. It states, unless waived by all parties, all hearings on variance requests shall be conducted in accordance with this quasi judicial process and procedure pursuant to the Gulf County LDR Florida statute and order of the court. Any and all waivers of these requirements shall only be granted with the affirmative waiver on record by all parties participating in a variance application review before the PDRB and for Board of County Commissioners. I'm wondering why we are considering waiving these requirements? So if the applicant and the board chooses to waive the requirements, can they be waived?
Yes. Under the policy that's proposed, Commissioner.
Okay. I am, I object to this language because it doesn't consider the public, and I believe that the reason we're going through this procedure is to be fully open in the public and allow, as we go through the procedure, the public and anybody who would have opposition would have the opportunity to weigh in.
In reference, and there's other sections in here with regards to definition of parties, all parties would include opponents or folks from the community that want to testify in opposition. So I'll make that further clarification, say that all parties is to include anybody. If there's any objection to waiving that requirement, be it the commission, the applicant, or anybody that wants to speak on a variance, then it cannot be waived.
But if we're at the beginning part of the process, and the parties who are involved waive a later part of the process, then that might eliminate someone who would enter into the process later in that process because of what is being discussed and what is being seen. So I think it can shorten the process and then eliminate, you know, it's clearly, one of our issues is that it's difficult for us to get our word out. And part of that difficulty is that we don't have a local daily paper. We have a local paper that's one day a week, and that does present some challenges. The other thing is, there's a lot going on in people's lives. So to me, this whole process is laid out so that you have every opportunity. So to me, this whole process is laid out so that you have every opportunity to get involved, and if the process goes through properly and, and the opposition never came forward, they had their opportunity because we did go through the whole process. But if part of it is waived...
Is, is your issue waiving the notice? Because you can't do that by statute. Is that what you're referring to?
No, I'm just...
Just the actual swearing in and...
I'm just saying waiving any of the, any, this is a blanket, it seems to me, unless I'm misreading it, that it's, it's allowing us in a blanket form that if the parties who are involved at that time agree, we can waive certain parts of this procedure. And while we're in this discussion, that language is also in 2H at the end, it says, if all parties agree, any of the above processes may be waived with all parties' affirmative consent on the record. So I would like to, for, for us to remove all of the opportunity for waiver. I think we need to stick to the process.
If I can offer, the intent behind that discussion with the planning, uh, department was, and I'll use yesterday, um, you mentioned it was a three-hour meeting, it was close to a four-hour meeting for the planning board. The processes and the hearing process for the county has changed and it will going forward. The way that business was conducted in the past for the county will not be done going forward. The four-hour PDRB meeting was a reflection in part on the steps that are going to be taking, uh, taking effect going forward. The waiver provision and the intent behind that was, there are certain variances that are not going to be controversial, that will not be opposed. They're often presented to you all and you ask for comment, you ask for staff recommendation, and then it goes through sometimes in a minute, two minutes, three minutes. That release valve or that outlet, if you don't ever vote for it, it can never go through. The only way it ever goes through is if every party to that matter waives it. So the planning department did that for the purpose of efficiency of time. Instead of a three-minute variance hearing, it may become a 30 or 40 minute because you will have standard practices to go through despite the fact that every party waived it. So that was the intent. Regardless, if you all wish to remove that, please direct us and I'll advise the planning department.
Do I need to make a motion to remove that language at this point? To get the board to say whether they want to remove it or not?
I just, I'll go back to the earlier statement. I have, uh, it was, it was the planning department illegals' recommendation that you consider this policy for transparency and to make a fairness. We've already indicated we're working on the LDRs. We've already indicated we're going to try to do the ordinance. I've been quoted as saying that we're going to try to get this all to you by January, okay? We've worked since November 10th to get this all to you all because we have other applications and we want to get that fairness process in place for the other applicants, regardless of the one that you have tabled today. So if you don't adopt this and you won't, wish to table it today, we'll take your comments. There doesn't need to be formal action, and then we can obviously reintroduce it at a later date, as I indicated. Regardless of your actions today, these policies and procedures on page 3H will be followed, and it'll be my recommendation that you follow those steps today. So it doesn't have to be policy, we're still going to conduct that procedure today.
My concern regarding the waiver issue is that it is a blanket issue, and we may think that a variance is a very simple variance and then just waive a lot of the procedure and approve it, and then when, in reality, it was not a simple variance, that it was a, a variance that has a, a major impact. And I think by its definition, a variance is, is a big issue because you are granting, um, the right for someone to change the rules, and we don't want to fall down that slippery slope. So I would stick with the, um, my request that we don't allow waivers at this time. Um, my other comment is in 2, item 2F, uh, written materials included to be evidence are presented to staff or the board members at least three days prior to any meeting or hearings. Two, two things there. One, I, I would like to request that it is three business days. Oftentimes, we have a meeting that's on the end of a holiday and weekend, um, and it's possible that the folks could not have even considered the information. So I'd like to change that, it's such a short period of time, I'd like to change it to three business days. And it says presented to staff or the board members. So I, I would like for us to consider if the applicant is required to submit a certain number of copies, that that be indicated as staff and the board members, or if, um, if there's a procedure in place for the staff to receive and distribute to the board members, my, my concern here is that the staff and the board members receive the information three business days prior to. So that if it's staff or board, then we may have some people out of the loop. So I think that's something we need to tighten up.
It's, it's my understanding that whether we pass this policy or not, that's, that's procedures that we're going to follow as laid out by the courts and that kind of thing. I, I hear your arguments and there's some other things that I might, would say to put in or, or take out myself, but I want to read it a little bit more and get a little bit more input. Can we just say that we, we can continue to discuss this thing, but at the, at the end of the day, let's, let's review it a little bit longer instead of trying to make changes today? Yeah, we'll just, if, if, would that work?
It would, and it's going to be my recommendation that the planning department include their proposed policy and procedure as part of their ordinance amendment for the LDRs so that not only is it your policy, it becomes county law.
Okay.
So in January, ideally, that those comments and this document in some form or fashion will be presented to you in an ordinance form.
Okay, so move to proceed in that fashion.
So are you, are you, is your motion to table?
Basically to, to table, to review, and to bring back comments and, and to proceed as it turns.
And my, my one, I'll second that motion, and my...
All right, you go on second.
My one other comment is, um, that we are certain that this policy would comply with Florida statute, of course.
Okay. Motion, second.
Has a more discussion on it. Object.
Wanting the audience? Just one comment, and then I'm getting out of your way. The process is great so far.
You got to come up here.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I didn't mind. I'm out of here. As a citizen, I appreciate the process that's ongoing. I think it's great. I recommend you consider at some point in the next two months, a joint workshop with the public, with you, with the PDRB, and everybody make sure you know exactly what you're saying, and I'll come to that and grade your work. Thank you very much for your performance. You want to ask welcome Mr. ...
I don't need you to grade my work.
Somebody's got to. I think I'd favor, thank you.
All right, thank you, Tom. Have a good weekend. Good week. All right, we got a motion, we got a second. Yeah, discussion with the members. All right, all in paper. Any objection? We have one objection, motion passes 4 to 1.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I can, I'd like to proceed to the PDRB recommendations number three on your agenda.
Okay.
Before I introduce the first applicant...
Just a minute. Mr. Hammond? You're good, okay.
As I indicated, Mr. Richardson's taking care of Mrs. Richardson today and could not be here with us. Before I introduce the first applicant that you have for your quasi judicial hearing this morning, I'd like to read and make the following recommendation, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, that you follow the following format for transparency and fairness in this proceeding. Uh, it will go as follows, and I'll read it for the record. And if you could instruct me, I will assist the chairman in conducting the hearings in this manner. The order for the hearing format to proceed will be that the representative shall present the variance application request and title and any PDRB, uh, comment and recommendations. Uh, all parties wishing to testify in the quasi judicial hearing shall be sworn in and provide their name for the record. And we'll ask Ms. Norris to swear them in. The applicant representatives shall present their request and supporting evidence and furtherance of their written application. Thereafter, the board members may examine the witnesses and applicants supporting the variance application. Thereafter, the persons appearing in opposition to the variance application may then present their evidence and arguments. The board members may then examine the witnesses opposed to the variance application. Thereafter, the board may discuss, comment, or question with the other board members and staff. The board members may then further examine any and all witnesses in support or opposed to the variance application. The board shall conclude the hearing and make its final determination and findings to either approve, deny, or table the variance application citing the records submitted as its substantial competent evidence as the basis of its final decision. I'll leave off the last indication and we'll proceed accordingly with that. It's my recommendation that you do so. Um, I also want to add, prior to calling the first one up this morning, Mr. Chairman, that a permanent notice has been affixed to the county courthouse, as I indicated prior, that a preliminary review and recommendation of the Gulf County PDRB shall be considered by the Gulf County Board of County Commission in a quasi judicial proceeding. The proceeding shall provide that the parties are able to present evidence, opportunity for all parties to be heard on the matter, cross-examine witnesses, test and question the evidence submitted to the record, and be informed of all facts upon which the commission acts. These requirements may be waived by the board. Um, I'll leave that part off as well. Um, and then the last piece to the notice to the commission and the public is that the, uh, public notice for these hearings today were placed in the Panama City News Herald, uh, and I have a proof of publication provided to me by the, um, planner for November 13th. Um, and in addition to that, I have an affidavit from the county planner that he posted notice of these quasi judicial hearings, um, in, in advance of 15 days as required by your land development regulations. Um, with that, Mr. Chairman, before I move forward, is there any questions with regards to my recommendations on how to conduct the hearings today? If I may, I'd like to introduce...
Patrick Floyd, Joe again. Okay, um, all I wanted, this is not the variance that we're interested in or have a problem with, but I do want to tell you and repeat to you that there's nothing in the LDRs that allows the Board of County Commission to take up a variance, nothing. And so what you're doing, and even the judge said that today, said, the only reason that I thought maybe under the circumstances, there might be a, a, a opportunity, it might be right for the Board of County Commissioners was when there was a, a, um, a conflict and there was not a quorum at the PDRB. And so what is being done here is you're being asked to go in and do something that's illegal at this particular time, contrary to the LDRs. It's not in the LDRs. Even though Commissioner McDaniel, Chairman McDaniel, you've done it many times in the past, but now you've been aware of the fact that there is a red light and the sheriff's here to witness that. Thank you.
There's, there's only two people in this room that were here when we adopted the comp plan LDRs, that's Mr. Yager and myself. Mr. Butler would, would have, was here but is not here. But Floyd was the county attorney at the same time when we did that. And for, since January 1st of 1993, we have conducted the variance procedures, the comp plan amendments, the comp plan changes, the subdivision applications and approvals, the exact same way. Since January 1st of 1993, every single one has gone for you. Now, I disagree with, with that, I'm not an attorney. I, I know Pat wants to go straight from the PDRB to circuit court on all of these. The, they've always come here, the judge in his ruling that I, I took said that it was correct for it to come to the board. If there is any ambiguity, it will be changed when we update the, the ordinance on the LDRs, but it has always been, and the judge said it was correct in the hearing. He said it wasn't advertised enough. So you are the people that need to hear these, and it is always, there's no exception to that, ever, in the last 21 years, almost 22 years.
Just, I'm going to introduce the first, uh, variance application. Before I do that, um, as I indicated, as the legal department and your planning department are in the process of proposing an ordinance to amend your LDRs to make these clarifications, as I indicated repeatedly over the last six months, the county has a standing precedent in practice. We have an order, the one variance has been tabled today. Actually, you have two variances that have been tabled today, and I'll go over those. The first one is with regards to Mr. Ellis Smith Jr., um, and the second, uh, was the variance application from Mr. Mike Smith, uh, section 13 Township 8 South, Range 11 West, Oak Grove, Iola, and Jackson side setback for a shed.
That's been tabled.
Yes, sir. The applicant, uh, attended the meeting yesterday, and it was the recommendation of the PDRB to table the matter for a further hearing and information to be received by your planning board.
So you need a motion to table that one?
If you were consistent with that.
That particular request.
Okay.
Second, my Commissioner Ryan, any more questions? One from the audience. Opposition, motion passed, 5 and 0 to table.
Okay. Consistent, as you've heard from Mr. Hammond and myself, the standing county practices, you've always reviewed these variance applications. You have one that was actually applied for, I believe, back in October. The last, uh, PDRB meeting was canceled after I consulted with the county planner after I reviewed his notice requirements, um, in November. So this one has been on the cycle for the last two PDRB meetings. Um, it is my goal that we have an amendment to your LDRs, uh, in January, prior to any future variance applications that you have. In the meantime, um, so we don't go four months out, um, we had a variance application from Mr. George Newman Sr., parcel ID 063. It's the second one on your list of the public notice. Uh, 06314160R, section 23 Township 9 South, Range 11 West, Two Palms subdivision. It's a road setback encroachment. Consistent, as I indicated before, the, uh, planning department would make the introduction of the actual variance application. I've done that for Mr. Richardson. I've stated it by title. I've reviewed the procedure in which I recommended that you follow, and I also have disclosed for the record the notice requirements that have been satisfied per the statute and your, uh, land development regulations. Um, without, if there's no other questions, I'd like to move on to the second item in your hearing format and, uh, ask for the public as well as the applicant, anyone that wishes to comment on this particular variance application to stand, state their name for Ms. Norris, and then Ms. Norris can apply the oath to swear them all in at the same time.
I'm here, sir.
Anybody that wishes to speak on this variance, the applicant, professionals, opponents, anybody that wishes to testify, please just stand up, state your name for Ms. Norris, and she will swear you in all at the same time.
Come on up to here first, so we can capture you.
State your name and address, name of your...
With 3050 Highway 98, Corzinger.
You'll raise your right hand and say adieu after the following oath. Do you solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you have given in this call shall be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Mr. Chairman, uh, the next, uh, item on your hearing format, following swearing in anybody that wishes to provide testimony to you all in your consideration of the variance is to, for the applicant and his representatives to present the request and the supporting evidence and furtherance of their written application for the variance. Williams?
I was asked, uh, by Mr. George Newman Sr. to represent him. Mr. Newman is attempting to sell his property, um, and applying for, or, upon obtaining a survey, realized that his carport was five foot into a, roughly five foot into a 20-foot roadside setback. In building the carport, he applied for a building permit, received a certificate of completion for that carport. Just recently, back in 2013 is when he obtained the permit and the certificate of completion. Just this year, uh, he'd done a survey and realized that the carport was actually five foot into that 20-foot roadside setback. Mr. Newman, uh, owns all adjacent property around him, other than obviously the roadside setback, um, and that's what we're applying for, that variance for that carport, so that he can sell his property.
Mr. Attorney?
Yes, sir. Uh, what I would like to do is, Mr. Williams, do you have anything else with regards to verbal testimony, other than what you've submitted in writing?
No, I mean, just what we, we, we went over at the planning review board...
Okay. Um, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, to provide Mr. Richardson's report from the planning board meeting yesterday in which a quasi judicial hearing was set and the applicant presented to the planning board, um, the planning board was provided a, uh, template form by the planning department. The following questions were asked of the, uh, planning board. Under 2.0507 Variances, Requirements, and Procedures, Section 34, the planning board was asked on the record following the presentation, are there special conditions and circumstances exist which are peculiar to the land, structure, or buildings involved which are not applicable to other land structures or buildings in the same district? The planning board voted 3-0 with one abstention, affirming that statement based on the record. The board, planning board was asked, does the literal interpretation of the provisions of this code deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by other properties in the same district under the terms of these regulations? The planning board voted 3-0 with one abstention, affirming that statement that the record of substantial incompetent evidence supported that statement. Uh, the PDRB was asked that the special conditions and circumstances do not result... The PDRB was asked that the special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. The PDRB voted 3-0 to state in the affirmative that it does not apply to this application. The PDRB was asked that granting the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privileges as denied by these regulations to other lands, structures or buildings in the same district. And again, the planning board voted 3-0 with one abstention that, in fact, they affirmed that it does apply to the record that was submitted. Following those affirmative statements and one denial under Section 34, the PDRB was asked then to state for the record that the notice of the public hearing was given in accordance with the provisions specified under special exceptions, any public hearing was held, and that any party that may appear or by agent or by attorney had that opportunity. They affirmed that by 3-0 with one abstention, that that had been satisfied, they deemed that satisfied. They moved to Section 36 of your LDR and they voted 3-0 with one abstention that the planning development review board had made a finding that the requirements regarding hardship relief had been met by the applicant for a variance, and that the reasons set forth in the application justified the granting of the variance, and that the variance is the minimum variance that would make the possible, the reasonable use of the land, building or structure. And as indicated, they voted 3-0 with one abstention that the application, written and verbal, satisfied that requirement. They moved on to Section 37, and the planning and review board made a further finding that the granting of the variance would be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of these regulations and will not be injurious to the neighborhood, otherwise detrimental to the public welfare. Again, it was 3-0 with one abstention that they affirmed that statement, indicating that that had been satisfied based on substantial incompetent evidence. Section 40, the planning board then confirmed that under no circumstances was the granting of variance to allow a use not permissible under the terms of the regulations in the district involved, and that any use expressly or implication prohibited by the terms of these regulations in said district. However, as provided in the regulations, the planning development board may make a substantially similar use determination upon the request of the development approval authority. They affirmed that statement as well required by your LDRs. The recommendation and findings based on those affirmative statements and following consideration of the variance application in the quasi judicial public hearing format, the application for the LDR guidelines submitted on the record and deemed by the planning and development review board as substantial competent evidence, voted 3-0 with one abstention to approve the variance request and recommend its approval to this county commission for today's second quasi judicial hearing before you. I have the identical questionnaire and template form that's been introduced by the planning department for this county commission. I'll provide it to each of the commissioners and then following any comment from the public and following the rest of the hearing procedures, I will then poll the commission and ask the same questions to affirm those statements, and then ask for your ultimate vote on the variance request.
Anyone would like to speak on this in the audience? Anyone? If so, be recognized. Mr. Attorney?
Okay. And then that's why we ask at the outset if folks want to, and so they'll be sworn in. If someone wishes to speak on it, they should come forward. Board also has an opportunity to examine the witness, Mr. Williams, before you, and also Mr. Lowery on behalf of the planning department who is also sworn in.
Does any board member have any questions?
I'll move to approve it, Mr. I think we have to go through the procedure first. I've got to go here first. It's a new...
I have a question.
Sure, okay. All right, just a minute, let's get through. Now, Mr. Attorney, being there's no one...
Yes, sir. I would encourage, recommend that you move on to the next item, which is the board may discuss, comment or question the other board members and staff with regards to this variance application.
Again, does any board member have any questions for the gentleman here?
I do have a question.
Mr. Bryan, you're recognized. Press the gentleman.
We're talking about this old barn that is in the road setback. It was just built last year. So, but was there a reason that it had to be built there? Or I'm wondering why the process didn't catch this when it was being built and what we need to do to fix that.
I don't know that I can answer that. I know that, you know, he applied for the permit. I don't know if there was a survey done and turned into the building department upon his application, but then he erected the building and then just this, you know, last probably three months in wanting to sell his property, he had a survey done and then realized that approximately five foot of it fell into that 20-foot road back, or that roadside setback. But as I, I think, as you have in your evidence, that once he erected the building, he did apply for that, or excuse me, he did call the county building department, they did come out and give him the certificate of completion. I don't know if they ever actually went out to the site or, I don't know what that process was at that time.
Yes, sir. If there's nothing others from the applicant or the board, the board may conclude the hearing and I will move on to the questionnaire and ask you for a phone of statements and ultimately a final vote with regards to this, Mr. Chairman.
I still have a comment for the board, but not for this gentleman. So is that appropriate? I think that, I'm not saying I'm opposed to this, but I think that we need to be cautious. I believe it was within this past year that we made someone at Sancho Beach move an entire house because it had been set, yeah, it's like a modular off-site built house, and it had been set about a foot or so into the setback, and we made them move it, and that was at great expense. So I think we do need to be cautious with these items and moving forward, I think we need to find out if we've got some type of a, just something in our process that we need to tighten up to make sure that we don't approve something that's in the setback. Because this was just last year. That's my only comment.
Sure, Mr. Hammond.
I didn't intend to clarify, but I do want to clarify that. So, Mr. Beck.
State your record, your name for the record, please.
Michael Hammond.
You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you have given this call shall be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do.
Mr. Chairman and commissioners, just, we don't require for, and it's just as a convenience to the public, for accessory sheds and buildings, we do for habitable structures and buildings, and I think the building basically, if somebody's building a $600 shed, for example, one of these portable sheds and putting it on their property, maybe a thousand dollars for the survey. So we don't require that. It's a $50 building permit or a $70 building permit. So it's, basically, they provide a sketch to the building department. If it's something that is very obvious, the building department will catch it when they go out on their inspection. But in this case, it's a little bit different. It's a small subdivision at Cape San Blas. It has much larger right of ways than were required. It could have had a 50-foot right of way, which would have meant that it would be very much closer to the road. This had, I think, a 66, a 60 or 66-foot right of way. So the shed was well behind the hedges. It was, so it, to the naked eye or to the building official, it looked like it was way off the right of way. When in fact, the right of ways were much larger. There's an extra 16 feet of right of way in that subdivision, so it skipped. It only got caught when they were selling it. So we always try to balance the pros and the cons. The average person building a shed doesn't want to pay whatever cost of the survey is to do a site plan, they just sketch their site plan out. So I don't think we have a lot of these habitable structures, like with the trailer, they are required. All habitable structures or additions on habitable houses or trailers or whatnot are required to have pre and post surveys, which catches these, and that's why we called them one in Sancho Beach. This is kind of an exception and probably would have not been called had it not gone through the closing process and been called.
What you're saying, we've got a 50-foot right of way basically and with a 25-foot road.
And this one, it got a 66-foot right of way with a 20-foot...
20-foot, so, okay. That's understandable.
Mr. Chairman, I believe the applicant yesterday submitted pictures to the planning and review board. Per their policy they adopted, they all voted to accept that under the three-day requirement. If Mr. Williams has that, if he has that visual that assists the commission, you can also vote to accept that as additional writing permission.
I have one. I'll put that into my motion, Mr.
All right, is a motion in order now, commission?
Yes, sir.
No. There you go.
We've got another...
Williams, you want to provide that to the commission?
Yeah, I only have one copy.
Pass it down. Are there any other comments or questions amongst the board before you move to your next step? Thank you, Mr. Williams.
Thank you.
Commissioners...
No comment.
Yes, sir. Commissioners excluding Commissioner Quinn, do you recall, last year I provided each of you a laminated copy of the variance under our LDRs for quick reference. I'm going to provide you another one again today. So when I go through, I've also handed each of you a questionnaire form that I'm going to ask you so you can read verbatim the questions I'm going to ask you to affirm. In addition to that, I'll provide you with the section of the LDR. Commissioners, before I proceed with regards to the questions, it is part of the recommendation of the planning department and myself that a standing policy on quasi judicial hearings going forward, there's two abilities, both the county can both adopt an ordinance or a resolution stating a procedure and a policy to deal with ex parte communications. Or in the alternative, you each can concur any pre-exparte communications prior to today's meeting. And so what we'll do before I ask you these affirmative statements is I'll ask each of the commissioners to disclose the nature and the identity of anybody that discussed an ex parte communication with you, this variance application before you today, from the application date until today's hearing. And I'd ask you to disclose that for the record. If you have no ex parte communications, you can state that. If you have, I'd ask you to state the name, the nature of the discussion, and if it's a writing, I'd ask you to submit that to the county for public record so that the public has a full record of everything you are individually taking into consideration for the adoption or denial of this particular variance. And this will be the standing practice going forward. So if there's no questions from the commission, I'll start with Commissioner Quinn. Commissioner Quinn, have you had any ex parte communications with regards to this variance request prior to today's hearing?
That's including you, like if...
If you've discussed with staff, you can, there's a presumption that you've all discussed with staff. So anybody other than your staff in the public, opponent, applicant, or any individual in the community that you've discussed this matter with prior to today's hearing?
No.
Okay. Mr. Macklemore, same question. Commissioner McDaniel.
Mr. Newman?
What do you want to talk about?
Yes, sir.
No.
Mr. Jaeger?
No.
Commissioner Bryan?
No.
I thank you, and just have it noted for the record, commissioners, that there's been no ex parte communications represented by the commission prior to your consideration of this variance request today. If there's no questions, I refer you to the document that I provided to all of you, and it is a planning department form that will be utilized going forward for all variance requests. Yes, sir. It indicates it's a county commission variance hearing and review. I've indicated the quasi judicial hearing you've concluded today, and what I'll do is I'll go down these variance requirements and procedures. I've already read to you the planning board's recommendations and findings of yesterday's quasi judicial hearing, and I'm going to read the similar questions, same questions to you and ask you to affirm and accept those recommendations for the record. Section 34, it says, "A written application for a variance is submitted to this planning department demonstrating that a hardship exists based on one of the following conditions." The first condition, "That a special condition or circumstance exists which are peculiar to the land, structure or building involved which are not applicable to the lands and structures or buildings in the same district." I ask the commission to make a motion for an affirmative statement, either accepting the recommendation of the planning board and also affirming it, or making a motion to deny that, that it does not apply.
So move to affirm.
Motion to affirm. Taken by Commissioner Macklemore. Questions, anyone from the audience? One from the audience. Opposition? Affirm, passes 5-0.
The second under the LDRs is, "The literal interpretation of this provision of the code would deprive the applicant of rights commonly enjoyed by all, by other parties in the same district under the terms of these regulations." I'd ask you for a motion either to affirm or deny that, application of that amendment.
So move to affirm as a PDRB.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger. Taken by Commissioner Macklemore. The other members, one from the audience. Opposition? Affirm, passes 5-0.
The third is that the special conditions and circumstances do not result from the actions of the applicant. This third was not affirmed by the planning and review board. I'd ask you for a motion either to affirm based on the facts that you had substantial competent evidence or to affirm it.
Affirm the PDRB affirmation.
And they indicated that this provision does not apply.
Does not apply.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger. Second by Commissioner Macklemore. Any board members? One in the audience. Opposition? Affirm, passes 5-0.
The fourth provision in Section 34 asks that the granting of the variance requested will not confer on the applicant any special privileges denied by these regulations to other lands, structures or buildings in the same district. The PDRB voted 3-0 with one abstention that they affirmed that that statement does apply to the record. I'd ask you for a motion either to affirm or deny.
So move to affirm, Mr. Chairman.
Motion to confirm. Taken by Commissioner Macklemore. Board discussion? Audience. Opposition, motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Chairman, the following questions, I've asked also for motions representing your statement as a board. The first is, "The Gulf County Commission accepts the planning department's statement of completeness and the PDRB preliminary review and recommendation for this variance application."
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion? Taken by Commissioner Macklemore. The other board discussion? One in the audience? One in the audience? No opposition, motion passes 5-0.
The second is, "The Gulf County Commission deems the record submitted as competent and substantial evidence to support the decision of this commission for this variance application."
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Jaeger. By Commissioner Macklemore. The other board discussion? One in the audience? Opposition, motion passes 5-0.
Mr. Commissioner, "The Gulf County Commission accepts the planning department's statement of representation that proper notice of public hearings provided in accordance with the provisions specified under special exceptions of the Gulf County LDR variance application process pursuant to the permanent public notice for quasi judicial hearings affixed to the county courthouse and county administration buildings effective November 19, 2014, which provides public notice that, quote, "All parties shall be permitted to present evidence, opportunity to be heard on the matter, cross-examine witnesses, test and question evidence submitted to the record and be informed of all facts upon which this commission acts." I'd ask you for a motion to affirm that statement.
So move to affirm, Mr. Chairman.
A motion? Taken by Commissioner Macklemore. Any further board discussion? One in the audience? One in the audience? No other opposition, motion passes 5-0.
Commissioners, the following statements I'll read are representations that were affirmed by your county planning board yesterday. I do not need action, I want to state them for the record. "The planning and review board made a finding that the requirements regarding hardship relief had been met by the applicant for a variance, that the reasons set forth in the application justified the granting of the variance and that the variance is the minimum variance that would make possible the reasonable use of land, building or structure." That's required by Gulf County LDR 0507, Section 36. "That the planning and review board made a finding that the granting of the variance would be in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the regulations and not injurious to the neighborhood," they affirmed. "And under no circumstances would the planning board grant a variance to allow a use not permissible under the terms of the regulations in the district involved," Section 40. "Based on the following affirmations that you've indicated for the record, in addition to the substantial and competent evidence that you deemed acceptable for today, I'll read the following statement. Following the review and consideration of the variance application in a quasi judicial public hearing format, in the application of the above LDR guidelines to the submitted record, preliminarily deemed by your PDRB substantial competent evidence, and with the Gulf County PDRB by motion of 3, vote of 3-0 with one abstention to approve the subject variance, this county commission motions and votes to either approve, deny or table the variance request."
We have a motion by Commissioner Macklemore to approve. We have a second by Commissioner Jaeger to approve. Any further board discussion? One from the audience. Opposition from the board, motion to approve, passes 5-0.
Mr. Chairman, I will provide this form questionnaire to Ms. Leanna Roberts, and Ms. Leanna Roberts will then secure your signature as well as the planner's. That will become the written record of your findings and approval of that variance today, and it'll become public record moving forward, and we'll provide that to the applicant.
All right, sir. All right, Mr. That all, Mr. Tarni?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, the second public hearing today is with regards to a residential non-commercial development order. And if I can, unless there's a requirement of the commission, restate the notice requirements that have been satisfied. It was also served and noticed, I'm sorry, noticed in conjunction with the first public hearing. So if the commission can accept the planning department's representations that this was also noticed, as I've indicated earlier on the record, I'll go ahead and introduce the I just need a motion to that back, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. So move. Motion by Commissioner Jaeger. Second by Commissioner Macklemore. For the four board discussions. You have the public? Opposition? Motion passes five and oh.
Mr. Hesman, if you want to come forward. I'm going to introduce the application for the non-residential development permit. It's with regards to a parcel ID 04539200R, section 27, Township 7 South, Range 11 West, Highland View, Victoria Avenue, construct a commercial building. As I indicated, and you have all accepted, the representation of the planning department notice has been satisfied with regards to this application. And consistent with your quasi judicial hearing order that you're following, it was the recommendation of the Gulf County Planning Department, I'm sorry, the PDRB to approve this non-residential development order by a vote of...
Is four oh?
Four oh. There was no extensions on the recommendation to approve. The PDRB followed the same quasi judicial hearing format. As we move forward, commissioners, I've introduced the application. I've asked Mr. Hesman to come forward. If anybody else wished to testify or speak on this application, I'd ask them to come forward, state their name, and be sworn in at the same time by the clerk, Ms. Norris.
Hesman, state your name there for the record.
I'm sorry. Sorry, Lawrence Hesman.
State your name.
Brett Lowry.
You solemnly swear affirm that the testimony you will give in this cause will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God.
I do. Thank you. The application for the commercial development is 49,000 square foot building along Victoria Avenue. You've got there in front of you a site plan where we have preliminary laid the building out. It's approximately, it's like 24.9 feet, almost 25 feet centered on the property, so there's 25 feet between the building and the property lines. We've provided a vegetative buffer. We also have a, and we've already received an FDEP 10-2 permit. We're going to have to go back upon this approval. Provided approved today, we'll go back and modify the 10-2 permit for the site development. So DEP permitting, the ERP permitting will be taken care of through there. All the utilities will be handled through the City of Port Shangjo.
Mr. Chairman, if there's any comment, if Mr. Lowry wants to offer any comment from the planning department.
One thing I want to make mention is from staff at the planning department, we did recommend that buffer there on the northwest side to the applicant.
Brett, can you explain so the public can hear what this variance...
There's a, what I've given you, you look on the aerial, you've got a residential structure on that side, and that's, that's reason for that six-foot fence.
And it's the driveway that's within 10 feet of the property line, not the building or anything like that? Yes, sir, it's just the driveway only.
They'll make it approved, chairman.
All right, just a minute. Oh, we got a whole new ballgame.
Mr. Hesman, do you have any other comment you'd like to offer in addition to your written application?
Yes, sir. Any board member have any questions for Mr. Hesman? You do? Okay, fine.
May I ask if there was any opposition at the meeting yesterday to this? To? Anyone speak in opposition?
No, ma'am, there was none. No opposition.
Anyone in the public have any questions? Any opposition to this? Tarni?
If no one from the public wishes to offer testimony or question or cross-examine the Mr. Hesman on behalf of the applicant, I'd encourage and ask the board if they have any comments or questions amongst themselves or comments to the staff.
Any questions? All right. Mr. Hesman?
I don't have anything.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Hesman. Just other questions we'll call you. Commissioners, consistent with our procedures that we're following on these hearing formats, I now would ask each of you to state for the record with regards to ex parte communications prior to today's hearing. And I'll start with Commissioner Quinn again. Commissioner Quinn, have you had any discussions or contact, either in correspondence or communication, with regards to this development order prior to today's hearing date?
No.
Mr. Macklemore, same question. Commissioner McDaniel?
No.
Mr. Jaeger?
No.
Commissioner Bryan?
No.
Thank you. Let the record reflect that commissioners of all affirm that there's been no ex parte communications taken into consideration on this development order prior to today's hearing date. Commissioners, the next item I have...
I've got a question for the attorney, one even.
Okay. I've worked with the planning department, similar to the other form I provided to you. This is a form that will be utilized...
Are you short one?
Sorry.
Now, continue.
Thank you, sir. This is a form that we developed with the planning department for a questionnaire to indicate the written record of your findings with regards to non-residential development hearing and review and your ultimate findings. The planning board had voted four oh with no objection or opposition to recommend its approval. I'm going to ask the following comments from the county commission, ask you to affirm them before rendering your final decision. "The Gulf County Commission accepts the planning department's statement of completeness and the PDRB preliminary review and recommendation of the non-residential development application."
So move to affirm.
Okay.
Another motion? Taken by Commissioner Bryan. Any further discussion? Anyone in the audience? Audience? No opposition? Passes five and oh.
The second is, "The Gulf County Commission deems the records submitted as competent and substantial evidence to support the decision of this commission for this non-residential development application."
So moved.
Second. By Commissioner Bryan. Second by Commissioner Jaeger. Questioning anyone from the audience? One from the audience? No opposition? Passes five and oh.
"The Gulf County Commission accepts the PDRB statement, I'm sorry, the planning department's statement of representation that the proper notice of public hearings provided in accordance with the provisions specified under special exceptions of the Gulf County LDR for non-residential development applications in pursuant to the permanent public notice for quasi judicial hearings affixed to the county courthouse and administration building effective November 19, 2014, which provides public notice that all parties shall be permitted to present evidence, opportunity to be heard on the matter, cross-examine witnesses, test in question, evidence submitted to the record, and be informed of all facts upon which the commission acts, if you would."
Second. By Commissioner Bryan. Second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any more further board discussion? Audience? No? Audience? No? Motion passes five and oh.
"The planning and development review board shall make a finding that the requirements for issuing an approval for a non-residential development order meet the criteria set forth by the Gulf County LDRs. They affirmed that yesterday and ask you to either affirm or deny that statement."
So move to affirm. Motion to affirm.
Second.
Second. Further board discussion? Audience? No? Audience? Opposition? Passes five and oh.
Thank you, chairman. The final is the recommendation finding this Gulf County Commission granting this final approval. I'll read the following statement, if you would. "Based on the substantial competent evidence that you received today, as well as the PDRB's recommendations to you for your consideration, that following a consideration of the non-residential development application in this quasi judicial public hearing format, with the application of the above LDR guidelines to the submitted record, preliminarily deemed substantial competent evidence by your PDRB by a motion of a vote of four to zero to approve the subject development order." Now I'll make that amendment. "The county commission motions and votes to either approve, deny, or table this matter."
Motion. Second. A motion to approve. Got a second by Commissioner Jaeger. You have the board discussion? If you want in the audience? Opposition? Opposition? Motion to approve, passes five and oh.
Mr. Chairman, the last item was with regard on your public hearing and notice, as you'll see there, that was the non-residential development order. There was the variance, and then you already voted to table the other variance application to a later date, indicating from the planning department and my department that we will, again, notice on the courthouse steps, administration building. And what we're trying to do right now is work with the IT department to get all these notices online on the county website in 2015. So it's not required by your LDRs. It's not a practice or a policy, but it's something that we'll strive to hopefully do for your January meetings going forward. So people, if they can't get to the courthouse, they can go online at least. And then we'll also add that provision in your future LDR. Thank you, sir.
Recognize this, Commissioner Macklemore.
Mr. Tarni, I've got one question for you. Every time this board approves or disapproves something, it comes through the planning department or whatever, are we going, are you going to be able to straighten this issue out? Or are we going to have to sit there every day, go through a court of law, go through water pouring, torture before we can approve something? That's all I want to ask. Yes or no?
It's my recommendation, until this county amends through ordinance, is land development regulations, that you follow the procedure that we follow today. And so the sooner the county can adopt some amendments, then we can expedite or streamline this process. You five commissioners will ultimately have that decision on how you want the review process to go forward in the future. But until that process is clarified in your LDRs, it would be my recommendation to follow this procedure. So we'll, I'll work with the planning department over the holidays to come back to you all with these recommendations. Ideally, you will accept these recommendations to change your LDRs, and that will change the process. If you adopt and accept our recommendations, then it'll be an effort to streamline this process. So your PDRB, if that's where you wish the majority of this to be done, the work will be done. And until that point, this will be the process that we follow.
What this done, this has bogged the whole county down, the whole system. There's no room for improvement. There's no room for contractors to go to work and get to work. We have bogged this system down. Today, we've been sitting here over two hours with one or two issues trying to approve it or disapprove it. So we need to work on getting this right, getting it streamlined. I've been here almost 16 years, never had no issue like this come up. We need to get them cleared. If it needs fixing, let's fix it, but let's get her done.
That all, Commissioner? All right, I recognize...
Chairman, the staff's recommendation on that last article is, for the hundreds, literally, you have done hundreds of these over the last 20 years, for the ones that are not controversial and has no comment to streamline and go, you know, suspend the process. And that's the intent. The controversial ones are the ones with any comment to go through the whole doggy phone show. But again, you'll lose all your PDRB board members because we only had, we only had two yesterday.
Volunteers.
So...
People are volunteers.
That's right. So there is a better way to do it, and the attorney's working on it.
All right, okay.
Mr. Attorney, I think you've had a pretty good workout so far this morning. Before we go into, the item four has been tabled, before we go into county staff, take a recess. Been here two hours.
Get her done.
Get her done.
Get her done.
Okay, go ahead. All right, public hearing. One of our county staff, Mrs. Roberts. Do you have anything? Good morning. Do you have anything for the board?
Adam Clark.
I don't have anything other than just to point a clarity. You said item four was tabled with the RV ordinance? Item four has been tabled?
Were you referring to item four in the agenda?
Yes.
Are you talking about the annual notice?
Public hearing notice.
Sure.
Go ahead, King.
I'd be happy to comment on that.
We have a gentleman that's asked to speak on that subject.
The county PDRB, as the fourth item, fourth item in the planning meeting yesterday, they discussed, continued discussion of your RV ordinance that they've been going over, I think for the better part of the last four or five months now. And there was comment and recommendations and continued discussion on your RV ordinance. But there was no actions taken other than some suggestions to staff with regards to clarity on definition of parcel versus lot. And they also asked that the county provide a map of the affected areas that would be affected by this RV ordinance. Those were the two recommendations of the PDRB.
RV.
Yes, sir. That's...
Do we have someone who wants to? Do we miss this?
Yes, so we have Mr. Tori Roberts, who has requested to speak on this.
Oh, Tori. Earlier, I think he, I think he's going to come back at a different time. Tori, are you here? That's not him. All right. Bennett, Mr. Roberts. And I apologize to you, I did have him here and moved him up into between three and four. All right. Roberts is not here.
While we're on the topic, can I ask the commission, over the holiday, is it your preference that we advertise that for their first public hearing in January? And we'll do so, since we won't meet again until January 13th?
Can I respond to that? Sure you can. If that's what we need to do, Mr. Attorney, do it.
Now. Roberts? You're good? Hey, Adam Clark?
I don't have anything, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, dear. That's fair. Dickens?
Good morning to you. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, commissioners. Very briefly, in front of you is the November status report for the Gulf County TDC. October bed tax collection was up 45% over last year. Last October, we collected $25,512 and change, and this year we collected $82,127 and change. So there's great room for growth in October. Yes, sir, October. We, also in your package, just for your reference, is the, a copy of the cover for the 2015 visitor guide. I'll be going on press later this month or early in January for that. So you know, we're, after we go to our trade shows in January, we'll have less than 1,000 guides left. So we will completely go out of our stock for the 2014 guide, and the 2015 guide should be in distribution in mid-January. Last week, we had our, my December TDC council meeting with, and we're a fully seated council with three new members. We elected a vice chair of the council, a chairman of our marketing committee, a chairman of our budget committee, and Commissioner Jaeger, in order to keep checks and balances with the new penny that will be coming in in January, also motioned to form a subcommittee so that we will have, we will have some accountabilities when that penny comes in and as we move forward on spending that. So there's a chair of that committee as well. Last week, Commissioner Jaeger and Ms. Kapinski and I went to Tallahassee with our coastal engineers and had a meeting with DEP in presenting some of our thoughts and plans for the next round of beach restoration. It was a lengthy meeting, a very detailed meeting, but just so you know, we are beginning that, that process. And with that said, Michael Dubrasky is our coastal engineer, and because there'll be six weeks between meetings, I'm requesting that we work with the county attorney to prepare the RFQ for the coastal engineering contract.
Yeah. So move to proceed so we can get that ball rolling with that design. All right. Second. More questions? Marking the audience? Opposition? Six and five and oh.
And lastly, I've just submitted to you our meeting schedule for the Gulf County TDC for 2015 and they'll be, they'll be duly posted.
All right. I think one question to you. All the audience watching on TV and who is the new chairperson?
Um, Mr. David Warner continues to be our chairman and, uh, Mr. Tony Whitfield is the council vice chair.
Good deal. Just for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Whitfield?
I'll get to the fourth one, November.
Always. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Houston. Thank you. This is November.
Uh, the highlighted areas on the first sheet is going to indicate how many runs we've had, uh, for the month of November. We broke that down in the Weewah and St. Joe, uh, total of 182, which is up 18 runs from last year. And I'll be giving you this each month and you compare from month to month. The second sheet is, uh, showing our revenue coming in for the month of November, $54,590, $599. Uh, there you can compare it to the year, last year, and the second sheet, uh, the previous year of 2012. And the way Medicare pays, uh, they hold all their payments after the 15th, so these amounts are going to vary from the month to month. So just, this was a low month, but don't be concerned about it.
Might be a high month.
Right.
Thank you, Houston. Thank you. Paul?
No, sir.
Manford?
Last time I was before you, I spoke about a truck that we are going to purchase on the Gulf County grant. And, uh, Mark has worked with the Department of Agriculture to have the other half of that paid for out of the mosquito control grant. Uh, the information has been passed to, uh, Administrator Butler and he approved it and we're just going to go through the motions now. I'd like to be able to go ahead and order that truck because it has a long, uh, yeah, a long wait time before we get it.
You're talking about this flatbed, is that?
No, that's, the flatbed's already taken care of. This is the F-150.
Okay, all right.
All right.
Good move, Mr. Chairman. Second. Motion. Taken by Commissioner Jaeger. Any, uh, question? You want the audience? Opposition, motion pass five and oh.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
All right.
Morning.
Good morning.
In an effort to continue to try to get all the limited maintenance agreements and easements and all figured out, we found, located another road. It's called Buck Ridge Lane. It runs off of Mason Martin Road. We have an interest in it because we have put pipes in it before. There's two main branches that come off, uh, between Mason Martin and Jim Norton's property, Bayberry.
Bayberry.
Yeah, and we, we've put pipes in it. We have an interest. I rode up it the other day and it's in disrepair. It needs at least a load of dirt right there where the pipe's at and then, uh, doesn't have to be regular grading, but at least semi-regular grading of the road to keep everything in shape.
So all you're asking for is a, a lim, a limited maintenance agreement for that particular road?
That's right.
Good move, Mr. Chairman. Second. Second.
Okay, one other thing, we've been in, uh, had a very good conversation with Mike LaMonica from the Deseret Company, where they had bought the St. Joe property where we historically had dug ditches on their property. One main one is runs north and south right behind Fabrica Farm area and, uh, multiple other ones. I mean, we rode around for half a day looking at stuff that we used to do on St. Joe property. He is in agreement for us to get him a limited maintenance agreement form that we use. He's going to show it to their attorneys. We'll work back and forth and hopefully have, uh, paperwork on all the ditches that we have cleaned historically that we probably have never really had in the past. But we'll have a record of, of the right document to be able to go in on their properties and clean ditches that would benefit the county. So with your approval, I get with the attorney. Once, once their attorneys look at it, uh, and sign it, we'll get with Don, let him sign it, and we'll start going to work on that.
Motion. Motion to move forward for this, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, second with, for the public's understanding, this is, this is to help drainage throughout the public areas. It's in public interest.
Critical for the county. Oh, yeah. Mr. Hawthorne?
I get a good working relationship. They got, uh, they don't feel that county is very friendly to them after a tax issue. Let's, let's see if we can work with this company. We need their fine home. How are we anybody in Bay County that they could be buying right here in Gulf County? So let's do that thing in our power. Try to work with this new company and get in here and get the odds in here.
Therefore, the conversation that Lee and I have had with Mike, uh, has been very profitable. I mean, he's been very willing to help with whatever we needed. I mean, so it's been a good, open communication with us so far. So everything's good right now.
All. Therefore.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Um, we got a request yesterday afternoon from the.
Mr. Chair, I'm sorry to interrupt. We didn't carry that, um, vote on proceeding to move forward with the Deseret Company on getting those limited maintenance.
Thank you. That all. You made the motion. You made the motion. You seconded it. Any more board discussion? Anyone in the audience? Opposition, motion, five and oh. I saw it coming. Now you have it.
Okay, yes, sir. Um, we got a request yesterday afternoon from the Department of Health. They have some old equipment that they need to dispose of. Um, they have a tester of two Cascade units and a Chaparral. I have no idea what this equipment is, um, that is on, um, inventory and then several items that are not on inventory that cannot be repaired, that just needs to be disposed of, that they need to take off inventory and needs to go to the landfill.
We need to let Mr. Manford handle this issue.
Right.
Yes, because we don't know what to have.
Yeah, it needs to go through them, but they sent it over and they're in the middle of an audit. That's why they're not here. So, um.
I would motion to, to proceed to Mr., Mr. Manford's approval for his recommendations, whatever.
Yes, okay. They may have to dispose of it as met. Okay. Motion. Second. Second by Commissioner Jaeger. Any further board discussion? One from the audience. Opposition, five and oh. Mr. Manford, will you take care of that? Is that all?
Yes, sir, I'm on it.
Right.
Just to clarify case, Mr. Chairman, there were two issues. One, they're taking it off the county inventory, those items that, I mean, that was what really had vote on and then don't decide whether we can set it to the landfill or not. Those are two, two separate things for the.
Need two votes on that or just one vote? Well, thank you, it's good. A little pause right here before we go to Ms. Kapinski. I think she has some ideas. Uh, the Sanders, I know you're busy later. Will you come up? You won't leave at a moment. We know that and I apologize for being here plenty of time, but, uh, come on and give your board.
Thank you. I appreciate the captive audience, actually. Um, I'm Katrina Saunders. I'm the center manager for the Weewah Hitchcock Medical Center. We are one of the two federally qualified healthcare centers for Gulf County. Um, I just have two things to speak with you about today. A reminder that we are in the middle of open enrollment for Affordable Care Act and Weewah Hitchcock Medical Center, uh, with our corporation, North Florida Medical Centers. We have an outreach and enrollment worker who was with me today, but, um, I sent her out to visit businesses and churches in the area. She is available to meet with anyone in the community who needs assistance with signing up for Affordable Care Act insurance, Medicaid, Medicare, Healthy Kids. It's a free service. It's a community service that we offer. All community members need to do is call, um, our office in Weewah Hitchcock Medical Center and we'll hook them up so that she can help them. She'll sit down with them and walk them through the whole process. Secondly, a little bit of good news, Um, Weewah Hitchcock Medical Center, um, has been awarded the 2014 Center of the Year for North Florida Medical Centers. Um, this is a pretty big deal. They don't just pick you. You go through, um, a quarterly review of 35 different, um, components from doctors, uh, patient care to the receptionists, how they're handling our federally qualified funds that we get in. Are we doing our applications correctly? So to be chosen, um, as the center of the year is a big deal and we're proud of that. We wanted to let you know that. As always, we are open for business and accepting new patients. Thank you.
Katrina, and for the public, one on television, it's not restricted to Weewah Hitchcock. It's for the entire county. They have some very good programs. All you have to do is contact them. They will work with you. Thank you and.
Thank you.
Safe trip back on. Now, uh, Kapinski, I'm sorry, but I didn't know this young lady.
Um, yes, sir. I actually was supposed to leave a little while ago to attend a meeting in Marianna. We're going to have to, um, blow that one off this afternoon, but, um, I do have several things I need to bring up. I have some stuff for Grants Department for EDC, but, um, Ms. Susan Teal from Health Check is here and she's been waiting a while. So if we could let her go first, then I will present the rest of my things.
Okay, young lady, would you please come up?
Sure.
You've been here a while too.
Sure, because you're interesting.
Yeah, I was going to let you try to get you out of here earlier, but due to certain circumstances.
Okay, well.
Take your name, Rada Leah, for the record.
Uh, Susan Teal, and I'm Senior Vice President and Chief Nursing Officer for Health Check Incorporated.
Health Check, okay.
Uh-huh. And, um, appreciate the opportunity to speak before the board and everyone here. Um, I'm, I have a letter that I wanted to read. My CFO, John Scholar, asked that I please present this letter to the board. And, um, so I'd like to go ahead and read this if I may.
Sure, sure.
And at the end of the meeting, I will get copies of this letter to each board member and Jeremy and everyone else that needs it, but, um, to the Gulf County Board of Commissioners, over the summer, Health Check Incorporated was purchased by FFBG LLC and now currently operates as Health Check Audit LLC. This transition took a lot of time and energy and effort. We've been very pleased with the transaction. As many of you know, Health Check has been in business for 19 years with the majority of those years here in Florida and in Gulf County. As new owners, we look forward to writing the story the 19, the next 19 years for Health Check. As a component of that story, a location where we are going to operate is a major, major focus for the ownership group at this time. Where we call home is very important to the survival, growth, and longevity of our organization and our employees and their families. That is something we do not take lightly. We've been approached by several states over the last few months as part of the recruitment process of Health Check. We're very flattered and are actively pursuing through the economics of each opportunity. As I've mentioned in meetings and conference calls with Florida representatives, the easiest thing, easiest thing for Health Check to do would be remain where we are. However, we need help economics behind, behind us in order to do so. I've been told that the state of Florida does not recognize the opportunity at hand as new jobs. I can show the state how they are new jobs as employees work for a new organization with a new EIN number. Possibly an alternative way to look at this scenario would be that, what the opportunity cost of losing these jobs would be. I think that after an analysis, one would quickly agree that the cost of losing the jobs far outweighs the debate over if they are new or not, and 50 jobs are better than zero jobs. To discuss our growth opportunity, Health Check recently had the best month financially in our 19-year history. We like to call this the new normal at Health Check. Our pipeline of new business indicates that November should indeed become the new normal at Health Check as we look to expand approximately 15 facilities over the next 90 days. During the 2015 calendar year, we expect Health Check to double its business base and as such, it is another opportunity for the state of Florida to help. We'd like the state and our county and its vendors to assist us not only in having, and not only in helping us to establish a scenario where Health Check can rely on redundant fiber, but also we need enhanced telecommunications as well. FairPoint is our current vendor and we spend nearly $50,000 annually with them. This is something we would like for the state to take a look at helping Health Check with the cost as we continue to expand and remain one of the largest and likely highest paying employers in the region. In addition to our above, above market pay, Health Check is proud to provide health insurance benefits at our MD Live product, not only to our employees, but to everyone in their household. I can tell you how many emails I have received from team members who have thanked us for these benefits with their six children at 2:00 AM and how well we take care of them. In an effort not to take up too much of your dedicated time, we would request to reconvene in person or via conference call to discuss the severity of our situation. Health Check has a great success story over the last 19 years and we are embarking on an abundant journey and are aggressively being courted by several other states. Simply put, we need the state of Florida to present their proposal for keeping us in Gulf County and the state. We've been working with representatives who have been very friendly and have been a pleasure to go get to know. However, disappointingly, I must say there are zero results and zero proposals. That is what we are seeking. We're seeking the opportunity to meet with the right people who want to hear our story and sharing our success as we partner with our home community, the legissta, legislature, and continue to grow our organization. And that is from John Scholar, our new CFO. And we do want to stay here. We have 50 people that we employ and we're very proud of the work we do. Um, I don't know if everyone knows what we do, but we audit some of the largest hospitals in the whole United States from our spot at Overstreet through telecommunications, through internet. So we just wanted to see if we could get in front of the board, to see if we could get the right people to help us know how to get with the state to do what we need to do.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
You need any more time? If not, I think you pretty much.
No, sir, I just, if there's questions from anybody.
I have a question.
Sure.
Uh, 15 facilities in 90 days, where are they going to be?
Hospitals. We work, we work at Overstreet.
I understand, I know.
Okay.
You're taking on 15 more facilities.
New hospitals, yes, sir.
Next 90 days.
Yes, we just.
Be channeled through the Overstreet facility.
Yes, sir.
You're asking us to ask the state of Florida to assist you in keeping you here in Gulf County.
Yes, sir.
Am I correct?
Yes, sir. That's it, that's it in a nutshell.
Well, hopefully we can. Hopefully we can.
So we want to just, um, get with the right people here at the county and I know Ms. Kapinski's been great helping us and we, we've gotten some little, little things going with the state at this point and we just need your support and backing to keep, continue working to get this done.
Okay, thank you, Susan.
Thank you so much.
Any, any other board members have any questions for Susan?
Any more?
Any questions? Anyone else? Not? Susan, thank you and have a safe trip back.
Thank you, sir.
Uh, now, Ms. Kapinski.
And, and to, order to follow up with this, um, we are asking, or I would ask that the county allow me to work with DEO. There are grant funds out there that the county would apply for on behalf of Health Check to put in the infrastructure necessary, that they need, the fiber that they need to be able to provide the amount of redundant service that they need. And I have been, um, meeting, I went and met with several officials in Tallahassee a couple of weeks ago about this issue and, and they are very interested, but there's just certain steps that have to be followed. So, um, if you would just kind of give me permission to proceed with, with going that route and, and doing what we need to do to get that grant application process going.
Good move. Mr. Chairman, I'd, I'd also like to add to that to give the EDC the permission to, um, put together any other type of comprehensive plan that would assist Health Check with growing their business here.
Motion, second. Further board discussion, one from the audience.
If you run into any roadblocks at state level, just let us know and we'll, we'll try to work that.
Wonderful.
Best we can.
I don't think you got to worry about state level. Okay. Motion pass five and oh. Tawon, stay on top of this, please.
Yes, sir.
I did. Who?
Okay.
Are you still out of the floor? Are you still out of the floor?
While we're on EDC, I'll go ahead and stay on that. Ms. Lynn had sent me information this morning, and I put a copy of it in front of each of you. There is an open letter.
Hang on, if I got so many copies, I'll switch one.
It's an open letter supporting local auto dealers.
Oh, yeah, okay.
And it's actually a survey, and if I can get permission from the board, I will follow up and complete that survey, and we will be at, Gulf County will be added to that countrywide local letter of support for, or letter of support for local car dealers.
At one time, I think St. Joe had five or six new car dealerships. I don't even know if we have a used car lot. I think we may have a couple. Okay.
You need a motion?
Please.
Motion over here by Commissioner Yeager, second. Second by Commissioner Quinn. Need for the board discussion, one from the audience, no one from the audience, no opposition. Motion passed five and oh for the, for the local car dealers.
The next thing I had placed up there was the project activity report for EDC for November. I have updated the steps to be taken. Yes, sir, that'll, it kind of tells you where we are and the types of industry that we are talking with. Got several really good prospects going on, and we're working on some proposals to get sent out. As you will see, a couple of them actually are on go. One of the businesses is scheduled to open at the end of this month. And I also had put information on there regarding the industrial park and broadband and the cell towers, as you know, as was reported last meeting. One of them is set to go and be constructed in 2015, and we're gonna be working with the other one because it's only a 50-foot tower, and we're hoping we might be able to get a variance to do a taller tower. And we're also working with some broadband issues as well.
Let us know how that progresses, because that's critical for the safety of Kate.
Yes, I actually received a call from Representative Bashir's last week, and he was like, I don't know if you heard the news, but we got it going. So I was very excited about that, but we are continuing to work on the other side as well. That is all I have for EDC. I've got a echo going here, I'm sorry. But I do have a few things from the Grants Department. Ms. Carey is actually out until after the first.
Your honor, represent her.
Yes, until the first of the year. So we got a few things coming up that we just need to get approved before, because we won't have another meeting this month. One of them is on the Stumphole Project that we are working on now, on the designing of the new phase that will go more towards Eglin property. And that, the HMGP portion of that grant, the deadline is December 30th or 31st. And based on my discussions with Clay Smallwood yesterday, we may not have the U.S. Fish and Wildlife permit by that time, so we may need to request an extension. I won't know until later this week, but I would like permission to request an extension from Division of Emergency Management on that grant, should it become necessary.
So move, Mr. Chairman.
Motion?
Second.
Second by Commissioner. For the board discussion, one from the audience, the audience, no opposition. Motion for the, pass five and oh.
The other thing is, Mr. Houston reached out to me yesterday. There is a grant opportunity through the Florida Department of Health. The actual application process has been extended to January 15th, and he wants to look at his inventory and see, he may be able to utilize this grant for desktops and some other equipment that he may need for EMS. So we just would like permission to proceed with the application process for that grant on behalf of EMS.
So move, Mr. Chair.
For the motion. Second, second over there by Commissioner. Any further board discussion, any audience? Opposition, motion passes five and oh for the grant.
That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Unfortunately, I've got quite a few things, Mr. McLemore, so we'll try to make them fast. Filling in for Don, he had a meeting with Waste Pro on December the 3rd with Ralph and Norm, that assured him that the transfer station would be up and running by January. I still have my doubts, but they say they're going to be, so we'll see. We'll follow that and let you know if something's changed on that. The main thing is that there's gonna be a rate increase in January, and the rate increase basically is gonna be because they're gonna start doing roadside pickup. Just to recap for everybody what's allowed on the roadside pickup, for anybody that has residential garbage through Waste Pro. Leaves would need to be bagged or bundled with limits of four feet high and four feet wide, no limbs over five inches in diameter. They'll make special arrangements as needed to either pick up for folks for a charge, or of course, they'll be operating the landfill, and people could still take things. That will be effective January 1. That will be weekly pickup, so.
That needs to be advertised.
What's the additional charge?
Weight increase.
The, I don't have the breakdown for everything, I don't believe, or I may. Twenty-one, twenty-five is the, it would be the new base rate. That doesn't include seniors and all the other things, but it's, it would be going, it drops down to 18 when you sign the contract. So the new monthly bill would be twenty-one, twenty-five for monthly, and of course, it's different quarterly and annually, there's a little bit of a change, but twenty-one, twenty-five for the individual monthly user. That would include the roadside pickup.
Six, six dollars.
Looks like three dollars and a quarter from, over what it is today. And that is the rate with, with the city of St. Joe getting on, that was a negotiated rate that lowers.
They can go on private property.
Yes.
They pick up the can.
They're gonna go, wherever your can is, is where they're gonna pick it up, that'll be there.
We can, county can, okay.
That'll be the big change. It's gonna be a little bit different, because the county picks up greater quantities and different things, so we'll be out of the business, they'll be in the business. And again, it's only for folks that have garbage service. We're gonna have to continue to look at that in the future and gauge it based on what the board will have to. I had intended to present to you the union contract recommendations and changes. Denise and administration and attorney has worked for months on this. May necessitate that we have a special meeting, although we're trying not to before your next meeting, because you're not meeting till the middle of January. We've been working without a contract since October 1. Staff, administration, and the union have agreed on all but one topic, but they still haven't voted. And the major problem is, is no problem us working without a contract, because the old one's in place, due to the, some personnel policy changes, especially with accrual of vacation and sick leave. It's gonna cause a problem for the clerk's office if we don't get this rectified, based on the way that annual leave is calculated and whatnot. And so Denise, you want to add anything to what I brought up?
No, we're hoping to hear from the union any day on that final issue. Like Michael said, the big issue is on the vacation approval, because it's gonna take some time for that to be put in place, but most everything else is pretty cut and dried, so.
We'll get back to you and try to coordinate, but that will happen, assuming they ratify the contract. And again, if they ratify all of it, but that one issue, you know, we'll go in and pass, the board's gonna make that decision again, so we'll keep you posted. Next thing, the SEVER requests have got to be in. Staff recommends the following for y'all to prioritize, and us to send to Tallahassee. Number one would be the Penexler Beach Nursery Nursery, $4 million would be the request. Port dredging project is still on there for $20 million, that's the second phase of that $40 million project. Indian Lagoon Shelling Project, we put in 1.5 million for that. Don's had a lot of discussion.
And there may be some other funds for that.
That's exactly right. That's right, that's right. Based on what's happening in Franklin County and other things, there's been some positive things with the shelling project. Cape San Blas Sewer for $2 million, and Beacon Hill Sewer for $2 million. So those were staff's recommendations for us to send, both to the Senate and the House for the SEVER request, community budget issue request for this time, and our deadline's upon us.
Question, can you clarify Cape Sewer, $2 million request? I know that we have worked with the city on that, they're probably requesting some SEVER requests too, but you know exactly what they want to do with that $2 million? They want to extend trunk lines, or?
I know Don and Jim Anson have had a lot of discussion about it. The trunk line is there, basically all the way to.
Down the roads.
Not down the side road yet. So I think they have the capacity, or a good deal of capacity, basically to ovation. So this would be side work.
Okay.
But the lift stations in the trunk line are in all the way back to City of Port St. Joe.
You need a motion? So move to.
Motion? Second. By Commissioner. For the board discussion.
Just for board, anything else that may come up in your district or may come up? I'll be during session and right before session, I'll be up there a lot, so if there's some specific thing that you have in your, get with administration, administration get with me, and I'll be up there a lot.
We'll be up there a lot, in fact, where we sue for. All right, motions. Come on, you're welcome to go with us. If there's a board discussion on this motion, one from the audience. No opposition, motion passed five and oh.
The next issue, I'm glad Denise is here, he might need to come up. I told him we don't belabor the point. We have put off to the point that we can't put off anymore, the county's server, Internet, email, et cetera, et cetera. And the budget last year got cut, we're to the point we have to do something now. More times than not, emergency management is off and can't get to the email, the jail is off and can't get to the email. Servers that are old and overloaded not only control our access to email, even though it's not held in that site, it also controls the Internet. So the entire complex is Internet, goes down when the server goes down, and it's going down every day now. So Denise wants to give a one-minute speak, he can, but basically, Don's decided to recommend that we go away from the service system and go to the cloud. And Denise, keep it brief.
Well, it's pretty simple. Server we have is a couple of years old, and it was too small originally, it was what we had the money to get. It's showing some signs of age, which you can expect. You can usually, in server environments, you can usually look at about a three-year replacement cycle, so we're there. You know, it's not as if we're doing this early. The figures came out, we took, we sat down and looked at it, and the server that I figured we were gonna need for the county was gonna be about $19,000. Okay, it's a lot of money. So we looked at some different options, some different ways to go. Even if we went with the new server, it wouldn't help our email. We have email problems. We have problems that we can't send emails over a certain size. We have problems with spam, a huge amount of spam and viruses coming in that our provider is reluctant to block for us, creates some issues with us there. It's a financial thing on his end, he doesn't want to spend the money to do it. We looked at that package, and we looked at this, okay, if we spend the $19,000, then we're still stuck with the email system we have, so how can we look to go around and get away from that? One of the things we looked at was the cloud with Microsoft. There's a lot of advantages to it. Our servers, we have to back up, we have to make sure they're fine, we have to make sure we have off-site storage in case we have a fire or disaster. With the online storage, they take care of all that. You just basically sign in every day, and all your data's there. It's backed up by them, it's secured by them. Our email would go into, it would meet federal guidelines for being stored to be able to be accessed in case we need to do that. Currently, we can do that, but probably not as well as I would like it, okay? When we came to the cloud and we looked at the option, we based it on a couple of things. We looked at a 50 employee block, okay, that's what roughly we would have. Each employee would be allowed five devices, which would be a laptop, desktop, you know, cellphone, or a tablet, or anything like that. We would get 50 times the amount of storage space we have now. There's just so many aspects to it. The cost for the service is about $13,000. It's about $6,000 below a server.
Is that a one-time charge?
No, sir, that's an annual charge.
That's annual charge.
That's an annual charge.
And the server would be for three years?
Probably be for three years. The, but we're still stuck with email. Now, I expressed to Don in emails and everything, and in discussion with him, that one's not gonna be easier, any easier for me to manage than the other. There's just gonna be as much of my time involved, no matter which way we go. The option with going with the cloud is that if we had a disaster and we had to relocate somewhere else, your data goes with you. Wherever you're sitting, if it's McDonald's or Washington DC, you're still able to get your data. There's a lot of other services involved. Right now, we currently, every time we upgrade a PC, we end up spending another $400 for Microsoft Office, okay? That's included free. Well, it's not free, of course, we'd be renting it, but, so you don't have to buy that. So, I mean, if you buy a computer and it's $900, and then you throw $400 in for software, you know, it gets kind of expensive, especially for some of the departments on limited budgets, you know? The downsides, it's a reoccurring fee. You know, it is a reoccurring fee. The upside is the security, the better mail services we get, the availability of the services. Just as a package, if you're looking at it from a standpoint of where we need to be in the future, it would probably, you know, be the cloud. If you're looking at it as a dollar and cents, it would probably be the server. But then in three years, we're gonna be back having the same discussion, and by then, that server might be $25,000. So when you average the cost out over, if you take that server and you say $20,000, and you divide it up over a period of three years, you know, you're looking at about, you know, $6,000, $7,000 every year. So we're not talking about, we're talking about a lot of money, but not a massive amount of money. One of the things, if we head in that direction, my suggestion was that every year, each department pay their share, rather than the board pay the full vote. Now, that, it sounds kind of ugly, but it's not. In my case, I'd only have to buy one license to control five devices. My whole office would be covered. The cost per user is about $209 per year, and that's government pricing, okay? Now, the other, the other portion of that is there's an issue with what I call administrative emails. An administrative email is an email that's Commissioner One, Commissioner Two, Commissioner Three, that doesn't have an actual desktop going along with it. So I approached them, and I said, you know, we don't want to pay $200 a year just for an email address. What can we do? And the alternative to that was, you buy mail services for that address, and the cost of that's $80 a year, roughly $85 a year. So when you start looking at the whole picture, we got 50 users, but we have about 87 email addresses. So 50 for the $200 a year, well, there's 30, 37 actually, and the 80, which we're gonna parse down. We're gonna look at those email addresses, we're gonna see how can we get rid of them, how can we chop these out? An example is, the jail has jail@GulfCounty, corrections@GulfCounty. When you, when you look at this, there's, well, we didn't know we had both of those, we don't use this one. So we're gonna go in, we're gonna parse that out, and we can probably get rid of probably half of those email addresses, so we can probably take out about 15, possibly more of the email addresses, which would be a savings of, you know, several thousand dollars. The only, the only problem, excuse me.
Saved by the bell, that's a long minute.
We're having phone issues this morning, so.
If you'll hold right there, I'm gonna tell them what Don's recommendation is, and then if they got any questions.
Okay.
Don's recommendation is go to the cloud at 20982, state contract price, per user, and 8680 for email only. The board would pay for the initial year from account 27715 to 7715, and that next year, each department would budget their own percentage for their yearly licensing fee, whether it be just for the email or just for the user. And again, the biggest hit's gonna come to 911, because they have the most things, but some of the constitutional officers have email address, and they'll have to decide if they want to continue to have that email at 8680 a year. Right now, just like we have all these email addresses, we don't know, we're getting them all for free, basically. We pay the one like $300, I mean, it's unbelievably cheap for the entire system, but we got a $300 system.
Yeah, pretty much, we don't have, we don't have the security features we need.
I think I'm on, and I think I like the cloud, but let me ask you one technical question. These phones and anything else, I just get email and answer my phone, but one of the issues that I have sometimes is when we're emailed, it goes to Commissioner Five, and then we email back through that, so it, you know, it keeps records of all of our emails.
Yes, sir.
My problem is, some of my constituents expect me to respond, you know, pretty quickly, and if an email comes to our system on a Friday, does it not get sent to me until Monday? Because I know, sometimes I'll get an email on Monday or Tuesday, and I'll see that it was sent like on.
Land checks all of your emails.
Okay, so it has to go through somebody to forward it?
No.
Can we fix that to where?
No, not with the system we currently have. With the new system, it will fix it.
Okay, I'm for the cloud.
The system, the system that we currently have is through a Linux-based server that's locally, and we've noticed in the past, I've noticed in the past, that I'll be on the And we've noticed in the past, I've noticed in the past, that I'll be on the phone with a vendor, and he'll say, hey, I'm going to shoot you your quotes you're looking for. And I'll have to tell him, I'll call you back when I get it. I might get it ten minutes later. I might get it the next day. And what's really amazing is sometimes I might get it as soon as he sends it. So, it's the whim of the way the hosting server is checking the mail, how often it's going out and checking it, relaying it back to the host server, and then forwarding on to us. We can't control any of that.
I'm good. And I'll put it in the form of a motion, if there's not any further questions, to go with the cloud.
Okay.
I'll take it.
Okay. Motion by Commissioner Yeager, second by Commissioner Bynum. For discussion on going with the cloud. One from the audience. Opposition, motion passed five and oh to go with the cloud system.
Next issue, similar problem. Again, we, he needs to stay for the next two issues.
We're going for the rain now.
The.
We got you on the ground now, so we're going to finish it out.
The county's website, and again, two or three times today, it was just dropped that, you know, staff will put such and such on the website. Or a while now, Lynn has not been able to upload anything to the website. Only person that can upload to the website now is Dennis, and it is extremely time-consuming, like, four or five hours to put a meeting on the website. Our website is ten years out of date.
Twelve years.
Twelve years out of date. We've come to the point that our current hosting agent cannot host our system anymore. So, we need about fifteen thousand dollars to do a new website that will be user-friendly, staff-friendly, better for the public, where we can put, in a matter of seconds, put something up for the public. We're going to have to go out for RFPs, for someone to actually build and host our website. But it's something we've got to do. And again, would come from twenty-seven seven fifteen, and it'd be the county's system. And we want to go with something that is user-friendly for the staff to be able to use. Right now, we do not have that. Dennis can, if we keep it to thirty seconds since your minute last time, we're pretty close. Sir?
Is that Don's recommendation?
That's Don's recommendation.
The one we have now, I'll only take a moment. It is twelve years.
No, go here.
It is twelve years old. It's very, very outdated. The gentleman that's hosting it has told me repeatedly in the last two years, he's done with it, that he doesn't want to host it anymore. The problem is, no one else will take it because it's old. Okay? The initial cost of building the website is the biggest hit, the biggest expense. There would be probably a little bit of maintenance involved yearly, but it's not going to be anything near what the originating cost is to make it. Right now, the way it is, is you have to do everything in two or three steps to get it to work. It just doesn't work out really well. And like I said, he's told me repeatedly, Bluewater Internet, that he's going to stop hosting it. He, I don't know if that's just, you know, words, because he's trying to encourage me to do something with it, or what, but we are at a point where we have to do something with it.
Two questions. Who's going to build the website? And since we're doing a new website, I know a lot of people watch these.
It will have the capability of being live streaming, yes.
Okay.
We do not have that capability today, but that is our intent.
I like live streaming.
We don't have anybody to do it. We advertise.
We don't have a vendor in mind. We're going to ask for, ask for quotes on it.
Live streaming would be good.
Yeah. So, move to proceed, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. And with that, I know we've got an infrastructure budget.
Well, is that where we're going to spend? We've, Donald's paper out at twenty-seven seven.
Okay, so we already got a budget line out of them? Okay, good.
I'll take it.
And again, that is a ballpark estimate. You know, we're going to get the bids in, and we'll.
Our bid is ballpark now.
Well, we're not going to recommend anything more than fifteen, but if we get a good system for ten, that's all the better.
Good deal, good deal.
Motion by Commissioner Yeager, second by Commissioner Bynum. Question on the board. One in the audience. Opposition, motion passed five and oh.
Last thing, need to go out for RFPs for a phone system. I think Don is finding out of patience with our current provider.
We are.
It's taking a lot of business' time, other than the server, which is an everyday deal. Probably the next biggest time waster is our current system.
We went down at seven o'clock this morning, as far as I know, we're still down. The entire county, complexes, no phone systems.
Mr. Carter in Weaver Hitchcock, he's been out since I don't know when. I think they just drive around, talk to people, you can call.
I was on the phone with the provider yesterday about the Weewall location while I was standing in Weewall, and asked them point-blank, that system has been plagued with incidences since we put it in several months ago. I mean, it's just common. And I asked them on the phone yesterday, can you tell me why this system won't work? And the reply was, no, I can't. For the system? We're paying now? Oh, yeah, we're paying good money for the system.
You have any budget?
Mine, can't even call.
Okay.
Well, I mean, it'll be changing service providers.
It's just mainly looking at different providers. We have, right now, the way it's set up now, we have to go through about four levels to get anything done. And what we end up seeing a lot is, it's not my fault. It's not my fault. And you have the two major players in it who, this is a common occurrence, just roll the ball back and forth to each other while we sit with the problems.
I'm good with proceed. RFP. Got a motion by Commissioner Yeager, we got a second by Commissioner Quinn. For the board discussion, one from the audience. Opposition, motion passed five and oh.
That's all I have, because we're back in the thousands.
Yeah. The next thing that we will have to look at eminently is the system in here. It's fourteen years old, ad static, old system. It's beyond its useful life, but Dennis has got something that's going to take his time for a while. Again, it's about a six-week process to get off the server and on with the cloud. So, I mean, it's not going to happen overnight, but before long, maybe, maybe at budget time, we can wait in budget for it. But we're going to have to replace the camera, we're going to have to replace the bikes.
All right. One.
I'm sorry, but Ms. Becky reminded me that I did forget something. I forgot my TVC hat. We had an agreement that was sent to us. I believe Michael Dombrowski brought it back in either, it was somewhere between June and August, and it never was executed. I think I sent it out by email to everybody last week when he forwarded it to me. And I need permission for the chairman to execute it. It's just an amendment with DEP for the current beach for nursery project that we're working on.
So, move, Mr. Chairman. Motion. Second by Commissioner. For the board discussion on, one in the audience. Audience, five and oh.
That's it.
All right, Mr. Hammond, are you through? Attorney.
Commissioners, I have a report on the Wells Fargo property that I spoke to you at the last meeting, fifty-seven nineteen Highway seventy-one. And Wells Fargo proposed to donate a property to the county. At that meeting, you all instructed us conditionally to go and get permission to inspect the actual residence on there. Since then, Brian Dreesman from Wells Fargo REO Asset Managers indicated that they are demolishing the property, and that their proposal is that they donate the parcel of property without any improvements on it. And they've already started the process internally at Wells Fargo to demo the home. So, I wanted to update you all on that. Remove, or encourage you all to remove the condition for any inspection on the actual home following the property being cleared off. We'll get permission to go out, look at the piece of property, and then come back unless you all have any other further comment to, before we start the process of considering the documents they're going to give us in that donation program. The, I received yesterday an email from the clerk's staff indicating the overdue balances for the tipping fees with the county at the landfill. There's a couple on here that are in excess of two thousand dollars. I'd like your permission and instruction to move forward, provide them a final collection notice, and then your authorization to move forward. The question from the clerk's office is either to write it off as bad debt, or to pursue the collection of the funds. And in that collection effort, if you all provide me direction, I can send them that notice and that demand for payment, or file small claims for the collection of those amounts.
So, we give credit after. I thought everybody paid as it went in.
I don't. And these, some of these date back to twenty-ten, twenty-eight.
Oh, okay, okay.
Some are thirty-eight hundred dollars and some are two hundred and eighty dollars. I'll send out the notices and collect them if you instruct me to move forward. But I have to have your authorization to go to court on this.
So, move to authorize to. Motion by Commissioner. We do.
Last meeting, Commissioners, I'm sorry.
I got to go on here. Second by Commissioner, I can move any further board discussion. One in the audience on this collection. Opposition motion, five and oh for the attorney to pursue.
The last meeting, there was a question from the commission with regards to a legal bill paid in your Munis report of eleven thousand seven twenty-six twenty-five. I thank the CFO, she went and did some research and pulled the record. That Siegel and Schu Law Group that was paid the eleven thousand seven hundred was per the court's order. Judge McFarland instructed in a tax overbid in his final order for the payment to the taxpayer's attorneys, third party, with Siegel and Schu. So, that eleven thousand seven hundred was a payment from the clerk's office per the order of the court in that tax overbid amount. I have other items. Commissioners, the only other thing I wanted to mention is, we talked about the planning board meeting yesterday. As we're ending this year, we, as I mentioned, we went over three hours yesterday with the planning board. I know that some of them were here earlier, but I just wanted to thank them. I sit with all these different advisory boards and volunteer groups in all the different capacities that they serve the county. And yesterday was no exception. They sat through a three-plus-hour meeting and participated and volunteered their times when they all had, obviously, obligations to their businesses and their families. So, I just wanted to thank them. I know it's a burden at times to participate in those hearings, but I did appreciate their patience. That's all I have.
Board here. Randy, you have anything you'd like to say, sir?
I'll mess it up with just one thing, though. Just one thing. Once every six or seven years, Christmas falls on a Thursday, and that puts a day after Christmas when nobody's going to come to the courthouse, is the courthouse open? I'd ask the board, let's close the courthouse on Friday. It hasn't happened but once every seven years. And the courts are, the way I understand it, I don't see Becky here now, but the courts are down. They're closed that day. So, there's no issue with the court, and so you won't have anybody.
I think we do that every year anyway.
Well, we do it every time it comes up, which falls on that cycle. So, so move to close the courthouse on Friday.
Motion, second, for the board discussion on giving the staff and the courthouse a day off. Anyone in the public have any questions concerned? Opposition, close the courthouse. Vote a five oh.
I have nothing for you.
I just have one quick issue, and it's the leave no trace ordinance follow-up. I just want to clarify where we are in the process as far as drafting the ordinance.
Commissioner, we have, well, I should say, I have a draft of both the RV and the leave no trace. We had sent through the clerk's office a public advertisement for the first public hearings for today. And we sent them the week of Thanksgiving. We sent them over to the News Herald to be published and advertised. They got back to us on the Friday after the Thanksgiving, indicating they closed early. They didn't come back until Friday, asked us if they still wanted to run the ad. Per statute, it wouldn't meet your requirements for the ordinance advertisement for today's hearing. So, we're going to send that advertisement out again. And unless you have a meeting prior to that or a special meeting, they'll both be introduced for public hearing, as I mentioned earlier, for January thirteenth.
Okay, thank you.
Chair has nothing. Time open for public discussion. One in the public, have any business before? Yes, come up, please. Wait a minute. Oh, yeah. Ray? Hey, you, I. All right, let's let this gentleman out over here. Come up first, just have a seat there. Ray, I apologize to you. We've been here for over three hours. You have too.
Come on up.
You'd probably rather go to the dentist than sit here and listen to me, so.
Uh-uh, come on.
Sir, I have a little presentation. Do you have a way that we can put that out there for y'all's benefit and the members? If not, I have a handout that we can go through, but it's about ten slides long. It'll take me fifteen minutes max if we keep talking.
I think our, I think our gal that normally runs that system.
She's gone.
Okay, Ray, if I can, Mr. Chairman?
Let's get back on it.
I'm sorry. And I apologize, because I wanted to hopefully introduce you, if I could, to the public and to the commission. The Habitat Conservation Plan. You all hired a consultant. It was Cardinal Entrix. Cardinal Entrix has been contracted with the county through your FWC and FWS grant to adopt a Habitat Conservation Plan. Mr. Lorraine is the representative on behalf of Cardinal. He's been working with the county, I think, for a better part of five months, dating back to the summer, and has had several steering committee meetings and meetings with the public, and has been working diligently with the county staff to get to where they are right now. Mr. Lorraine is, part of his contract is required to come to you all and make updates in public settings, so the public understands what you all are developing. I know that when we bring up the HCP, it's usually maybe in a brief comment, but I know the commissioners on the coastal districts can probably say it better than me, that this HCP is crucial to a lot of things that confront the county in the future. And Mr. Lorraine is here to present that. In addition to that, Mr. Lorraine hopefully can speak to the website that they've developed as part of the contract, that the public can also go and get all this information after today as well. So, it is important, and I thank Mr. Lorraine for coming all this way.
No worries. And I understand you've had a long morning. It's after lunchtime, so I will try and be brief, but I do appreciate the opportunity to share what you've done.
You got your new name change here.
Logos there. And again, at the end of this discussion, I will provide for the members of the audience our website that we're maintaining, where they can go and access this information as well. Again, Ray Lorraine, I'm a senior consultant with Cardinal Entrix. And we are, are working, have been working, as Mr. Novak has said, about nine months now on the development of your HCP. I think it's important that we start by sharing with you a little bit of the legalese and the law, because that will help you all understand why we're in the position we're in. Under the Endangered Species Act, Fish and Wildlife Service regulates what they call "take" of listed species. And that has a number of definitions that includes things like killing, capturing, collecting, shooting, hunting. But in turn, includes two terms that are important for land development regulation, and those are harm and harass. The harass definition is an actor omission that essentially, as you would surmise, harasses a listed species to the point that it disrupts normal breeding, reproduction, feeding, sheltering, et cetera. In the case of Gulf County, some examples that would be appropriate are clearing of land that supports a beach mouse, or a listed sea turtle could be deemed by the Fish and Wildlife Service as harassment. Disruption of sea turtle nesting, or the hatchlings trying to get to the Gulf because of lights that are turned on could be deemed harassment. And so, if that action gets to a point of harm where the actual animal is killed or injured, again, that little hatchling can't get to the water and ends up getting run over in a parking lot, they might deem that as harm. We want to avoid that because that puts Gulf County, that puts the property owners that are developing along the coast in a potential legal situation. So, fortunately, the Fish and Wildlife Service has a methodology to get permits that authorize development in areas where listed species may occur. And they actually have the grant program that y'all have taken advantage of to help take some of that burden off of local governments who have, you know, a number of property owners or homeowners that may be impacted by this. As y'all are aware, it takes a long time, costs a lot of money, and if every one of your residents had to do that, it would be very frustrating for them, believe me. So, this permit process will provide legal protection, authorize development in a area where listed species can occur, and bring those participants into compliance. The Habitat Conservation Plan that we're doing, the best way to think of it is similar[1789.94] to a wetland project, where you have to get a mitigation plan for the Corps of Engineers or DEP. This Habitat Conservation Plan is something analogous to that. It describes where the project is, the species that are gonna, gonna be addressed, the measures that are gonna be taken to minimize and, and protect, um, those species, so that development can occur. This is a development-prudent process that we're going through. In Charlotte County, real-world example, quickly, um, we worked on a plan there for Florida scrub jays, a threatened species, there were nearly eight thousand single-family lots, eighteen thousand, I'm sorry, not eight, that had scrub jay habitat with birds on them. Um, going through the federal process individually, we projected, um, it would cost individual homeowners in excess of fifty thousand dollars and two years of, of dealing with the federal government. By the county doing a plan and administering it as part of their own development review process, we estimated over the thirty-year life of the project that we could save a hundred-and-sixty million dollars in permitting costs, um, from two-hundred, upwards of two-hundred-and-ninety-four billion dollars with mitigation costs that the Fish and Wildlife Service was currently, um, requiring, because the service was not really taking into account the, the local needs and the local abilities of, of the staff. So, again, if done correctly, greatly reduce the time, greatly reduce the cost, and, and be a, a benefit for, for your community, not a, not a, a problem. So, um, as Jeremy has said, we've engaged stakeholders, we've had two steering committee public meetings so far, the first was in September, we had about twenty-eight participants, including your staff and administration, um, members of the general public, including invited steering committee members. Um, we had a second meeting in November that was attended by about eighteen people, I think, signed in, um, at that meeting. We have discussed that there are seven species along the coastal parts of your county that, that are potential conflicts for, for development, those are four species of sea turtles, um, the St. Andrew beach mice, and, and two species of birds, the piping plover and the red knot, which are more of, of a migrant species. Um, there are many other listed species in the county, but it's not our position to load up this thing with a bunch of species that do not occur in the areas where we're talking about, and again, this is down along the coast. There are three areas that we recommend and, and should be included in this project. The first is the Beacon Hill and St. Joe Beach area, the beaches, or the, the parcels on the Waterwood side of the highway from, from the Bay County line down to Windmark Beach. Um, Windmark has done their own federal permitting, so they don't need to be included in this. Um, the next, um, major segment of the county is, is between the State Park and Eglin Air Force Base on, on the peninsula, and that has, um, exposure potentially to sea turtles and beach mice. Um, and then the third area is from Eglin south down to Indian Pass, or I'm sorry, east down to Indian Pass. And, and in all these areas, what we're talking about are the areas that have the listed species habitats, which, again, we're focusing on the dunes, the scrub, and the beach. So if you're in this general area and you have a Flatwoods lot, we're not regulating like you have nesting sea turtles in Flatwoods. You know, we're gonna work with your, your, your staff and administration to really try and focus this permit area to the places that need it. Um, and lastly, we recognize that Beacon Hill is different from Cape San Blast, is different from the peninsula, and so we're gonna develop the criteria that, that we use to be, um, um, specific to those areas and the species that, that have potential conflicts. Um, this really is a process to help primarily single-family and small development projects. The, the big ones have the wherewithal to hire the consultants and go through a multi-year process. We recognize that, that the, actually, it's about twenty-three hundred lots, about half of those are undeveloped still in, in these areas. You know, it, it's, it's detrimental, it would, it would prevent development. So, um, single-family, multifamily, commercial, um, associated recreational and, and accessory structures, um, county projects, you mentioned your, your sewer projects, your parks, those, those should fall under this as well, so that you all have the protection. Emergency structure protection and response, again, we've been fortunate, it's been nine years since we've had a storm in Florida, but now's the time to address that as well. Um, beach cleaning and grooming, y'all are already dealing with, um, and, and so that should be easy to incorporate. Um, we recognize Gulf County's not Walton or Escambia, you're not building high-rises, you're not building big condos, and, um, fortunately, the service recognizes that too. You can look in an aerial photograph and see a lot of developed houses that still have a lot of beach and dune and natural vegetation on it. There are many good things that y'all are already doing under your LDRs and your comprehensive plan, and so as part of this application, we want to document that to the Fish and Wildlife Service. So, um, our local subs, PRI, and, and Southeastern Consulting Engineers are helping with reviewing your permitting files, so we can document that. Um, we'll build that into the application, um, along with other measures that we may have to, um, implement, um, to, to, to be consistent with Fish and Wildlife Service policies. But the goal is not to recreate the wheel, we recognize you have things like lighting ordinances, you grant variances to pull properties landward out of the CCCL line and, and away from the beach, so, so we want to, we want to take credit for all those positive things. There will be a mitigation requirement, it's something the service, um, currently is requiring on Perdido Key and other, other areas. Um, that could be avoidance and minimization of the footprint of the project, again, something y'all already do. Um, there is, um, a continuing need for education, which is, again, something I know the county is very active in, your TDC, groups like the CCA, you know, those are all very positive things, and, and, and with your tourist economy, one of the biggest challenges is you have a new group of folks to educate every week, you know? And, and so the residents that are here that understand turning off the lights or, or drawing the blinds, you know, during the summer is easy, but that's a challenge when you, when you have that population turnover. So that'll be an, an important component. So, um, where we're at, um, so far, we're about five months into it, you know, we, we've done the background research, we tried to, um, limit the species that are involved as much as we can to those that really, we, we have a conflict with or a potential conflict. Um, we're, we're going through mapping exercises, again, to attempt to limit as tightly as we can the portions of the county that will fall under this HCP, um, but it is important that we, we're adequate in our, our coverage, so that the folks that need it get the legal protection, um, that they need. Um, from here, we'll work through minimization and avoidance measures, again, many of those are probably already being implemented, they are being implemented under your LDRs, but we may have to tweak some things or work with your staff to see if there are other positive things we can do. Um, and, and then, moving into next year, we'll be developing administrative components of this, um, again, looking at things like LDRs, monitoring and reporting that the service may require, um, and, and packaging this all up, again, with a goal of completing our work, um, on your contract deadline of next June. Um, again, lastly, the, um, the website that we have prepared to track this information for the folks in the audience, GulfCountyHCP, all one word, dot info, I-N-F-O, is, is a website, we've set it up, it's something that we maintain, um, it's live and accessible now. Um, and, and on that, we have attempted to, um, in, include notices of meetings, you know, we're, we're trying to make sure that all, all folks that are interested are, are aware of that, we've kept signing logs and, and do email blasts before any meeting that we have, um, as components of this plan are prepared and drafted, we'll post those out there for public review. Um, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm working with your staff and administration to, to explore other opportunities to come speak with folks up here that may be interested, that, that would like further information on this. So, um, again, it's late in the day, I'll stop there, I think I've kept it around ten, ten or fifteen minutes, but, but I want to answer any questions that y'all may have.
I'm gonna open it, and I'd like to ask you this, if you could, maybe in the next ninety days, if you find it convenient to come back through, get you up here at the top of the list, and if you want to.
That's fine.
Put on a presentation.
And, 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 sir, I'll, I'll share with you, and, and, Dr. Hardman's been very involved in this so far, I, you know, we have talked with her about me coming up and talking at one of the CC's, CAC meetings in January, that's, that's a lot of traveling, probably for a short amount of time, but, but I think it would be worth it if, if your administration agrees, and I think they do, that, again, folks are gonna be afraid of this until they really figure out that it could be helpful.
Commissioner, yeah, you may have a question.
Just briefly, for, for the public's knowledge, the way this got started was, it was one, one builder out on Cape San Blast, I think in the Ovation area, that, that was stated that they were gonna get to, have to do an HCP for, for the beach mouse, the builder, you know, so I think what we, county met, and we met with FWC and the, and Fish and Wildlife folks, and they said, if you'll do a county-wide HCP Habitat Conserva- Conservation Plan, we won't, we won't go to each individual property owner. This is very important for, for our coastal community, and I think everybody's realizing, and I know Pat has realized that she's been very involved with that, this isn't something that, that is just a fly-by-night, we're, we're trying to get a, a plan, this, this is something that's important for the, the property owners, uh, throughout Gulf County, so I wanted to make mention of that.
I'll share, I'll share with you, just to put it in context, and, and, and you're right, Commissioner, Perdido Key, and certainly the folks further west in the Panhandle in Alabama, they're, even single-family properties are, are having to go through this process. Quite honestly, I don't know why the service hasn't enforced it here, but beach mice have been listed for sixteen years, loggerhead sea turtles for thirty-eight, the Endangered Species Act has been in place since nineteen seventy-three. Um, the staff has indicated they're, they want to collaborate and help y'all get into compliance, not come down with a big stick and a handcuff. So this is a great opportunity, it's a, a scary proposition for folks that haven't had to deal with it before, but, um, again, it's primarily, um, in place to help the, the small quarter-acre lots, half-acre lots, mom and pops who don't have two and a half years to sit on their hands, or, or, then to be told they have to write a mitigation check that's worth more than the value of the lot they're trying to build on.
It's a project that the county has taken on to help property owners.
And, and, and again, it's important to note for those that are listening, and, and we're spending the Fish and Wildlife Service's money to do that, so at least they are appreciative and, and provide that support for what honestly is a, is a long and costly process.
Well, in reviewing back, uh, a year ago or so, Cardinal was, they were friendly to us, friendly to the people, we had some on there I had questions about, that they were, uh, like they were more environmentally.
They know they work for Gulf County.
You do, you work for us, and you're not gonna hurt us.
Well, I, again, there are gonna be things, honestly, that we'll end up having to do, probably, that folks won't like, but again, I'm, I've never worked for an agency in, in the thirty years of practice in Florida, and as I, I told you back in, when was it, January or February, um, this is your application. And, and the reason we're here today to share with you the progress is ultimately, you are the ones, and actually, I had a, had a comment or question from one of the Fish and Wildlife Service staff, um, at our last meeting, and I had to remind her that we're, we're not doing this by consensus vote, it's y'all's application, we, we as your consultant want to do the best job we can to get you in compliance with the law, we're not gonna offer much extra stuff that we may not have to, but it is important that y'all realize there are some things we have to do to, to get into compliance, and ultimately, that's gonna benefit your constituents and, and should expedite permitting processes on down the road for the next thirty years of this, so that's, that's our goal.
Thank you, Ray.
While Ray's still there, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, he had asked the question a couple minutes ago of why, why they weren't here already when they were in Ovation a few years ago, and I know Ray's worked closely with our administrator, Mr. Butler's had a good working relationship with Kristi Yankis from the service over the last few years, she's been over here numerous times, and they have commented that it is the county's cooperation and the county's efforts to try to get this done. Um, the way business is done and the way we treat our coastal communities is going to change, and that's what we've been talking about for the past year. Regardless, it's going to change, it's just how it's going to change, and the thing we've talked about in the steering committee, I know Dr. Hardman's here, Ray's here, and the people in the public need to understand, ultimately, this decision will fall to you five. You five are going to embrace and adopt a final application. So the, this steering committee, Cardinal, the staff are all gonna present it to the five of you, we'll have public hearings, and then you're going to adopt and send it up for review and approval. Um, but the process is, we still have about six months on the current contract, so.
Yes, and, and, and we're, you know, we got a little bit high, behind early on, but we're, we're, we believe we're back on track, you know, we've been doing a lot of research and, and sort of the, the baseline biological information on the species, you know, now we're to a point where we, we can work with your administration and the service to really tighten up and define that project area, and of course, that's gonna immediately concern folks, am I in or out, and what do I have to, have to do that may be different. Um, but this is a work in progress, it's gonna take another six months, but we're, we're trying to be open and, and encourage questions and, and participation of folks that might be interested or affected by it, and, and again, this website, we, we've got some stuff we, we need to get up on there, but things like meeting minutes from the steering committees, these presentations, including this one, sir, I'll, I'll get up there later today, uh, and, and, and we'll continue working.
Ms. Yankis has indicated she will be coming to the podium at a future meeting to discuss the service's perspective.
We, we had sent her a couple emails and phone calls, and I'd never heard back, so I guess she was not able to attend today, but she has indicated that she's happy to come here and help answer questions on behalf of the federal government, if you have them, so.
Ray, just one housekeeping measure, um, they submitted a, an assignment of their contract, they went from Cardinal Entrix to now doing business as just simply Cardinal. Um, it was submitted for a turn of review at the last meeting, I have since reviewed it, and I'd like to, uh, ask for the Commission to approve the chairman's signature on that assignment for the continuation of that contract. Thank you.
Motion. Other board discussion.
Okay.
Motion, I ask for the.
You need to abstain.
I can't, Mike.
So consult.
All right, you can't back off, I need a motion. Got a motion by Commissioner Quinn, second by Commissioner Bryan, other board discussion.
Commissioner, if you will state the nature of the abstention for the record and fill out.
PRI must do some of that work for you.
Yes, sir, we're working with your staff, and, and so.
I'll abstain from that, and sign the proper documents. Anyone in the audience? Motion passes, four for one abstain.
Thank y'all, that's all I have.
Ray, come back to see us now. Love to, I love it up here, you know, so, come on. Uh, Kristi, come on, and we go, Dr. Hardman, and we go.
Well, I wanted to speak to the Cardinal thing.
Wait a minute, okay.
Kristi McElroy.
Come on, Kristi.
Okay, EDC Chairman, um, I just wanted to close out the year and say thank you to the staff and to the county commission for all your support. Um, we've made some good strides, put some processes in place, uh, worked well, we've got a great board, want to thank you for that. And I do a chairman's report, um, and then there's also some, uh, letters in here, uh, like the Enterprise Zone, of course, it's going to be sunsetting, uh, we, of course, want to make sure you guys give our.
Continue that.
Yes, so that support. So I'm gonna hand this over to the clerk, and.
Ms. Roberts, second.
Thank you, and again, thank you, have a happy holiday.
Thank you, dear. Dr. Hardman.
I swear, one moment.
All right, put it one moment.
Pat Hardman, I just, now I know why Shakespeare, I feel very much like Shakespeare, thought about my lawyers, um, when I'm doing this meeting today, but just on the HCP plan, uh, very quickly, this is not gonna be business as usual, and you're gonna have some very upset people out there that don't understand what this is going to do. I also don't think that they know that the county had no option except to do this, period. And there are some things in this mitigation that US Fish and Wildlife is asking for that's gonna really rattle some people, and it's gonna cost people big money. Um, but they're, they gave out a proposal, now, I want to tell you, I want to thank Ray and Cardinal, because when we started this at the steering committee, it, US Fish and Wildlife was like, my God, all the humans go away, and they only, a snake that hadn't been seen since nineteen fifty-five on the list. Cardinal has pulled in, pulled in, and pulled in to, to hold that down some, and they are working for us and the county, but people better start looking, it's gonna change the way some building is done. But people better start looking, it's going to change the way some building is done. And there's one of their mitigations that you're going to probably have the Humane Society go crazy on, and that's no domestic cats in these areas. So, and dogs only on lease use. And so you're going to have, that is going to be your plan, but I know we're going to have to, U.S. Fish and Wildlife is going to have to approve whatever you say, but some of these mitigation things look good when you just read it. Tell me I can't have a cat, okay? So that's all I want to say, just be aware that this is a bigger issue than just HCP. Thank you.
Have a good holiday, Dr. Hardman. Anyone else? Motion over here for Chairman. We got a second, thank anyone for staying. Have a good holiday.